Very wealthy, but they live in this tiny little house. And they just did some work on it, but they can't do anything more because it's on water. It's on a pond, not on the ocean. And they actually wanted to make some improvements and they were -- so they're complaining to me about all the different bards because they've got conservation, but they've also got state because of the fact that it's on a pond and it's in a state reservation now and all this stuff. I mean, they just bought it years ago and they didn't even build it. But anyway, because of that, I know, and because we go there.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, town of Winchester, and welcome to the September 11, 2018 Planning Board meeting. I have an agenda here somewhere. So today we have a -- excuse me. No, that's not my agenda. Oh, there it is. So shortly, we're going to start a discussion on a planning board proposal to rezone certain residential plots along North Main Street, just off of North Main Street, Main Street, I should say, from GBD to residential. Then we're going to be talking about the development on Highland Ave. And then we're going to be going into some petitions and then some ZBA petitions, some Fall Town Meeting articles, and hopefully we'll adjourn at 10:00. So thank you all for being here. And I think that's about all I have to say. So why don't we jump right into the GBD, General Business District Community Conversation. It's noted on the agenda. So what is this all about? North Main Street has been zoned as GBD for a very long time. And one of the things about North Main Street zoning is that everything that is within 150 feet of North Main Street has also been zoned in the General Business District. And when we were -- and one of the concerns is that this includes homes, or lots, I should say, on side streets, which are primarily residential. So historically, and we've gone back 40, 50 years looking at --
Late '60s.
Late '60s, this has always been GBD, which I didn't realize. But earlier, late last century, I think I can say that now, it was rezoned from GBD to GBD III and II, and those are, I think it's all GBD III.
It was actually 2000, so it was this century.
Yeah. Was it this century?
It was 2000.
Okay. So early this century, it was, there were, it was rezoned to GBD II and III, I believe, which are a little more restrictive in what you can do. So the concern that, and I have to admit that I was one of the ones who brought this forward, is my concern, and I should note I live a block off of Main Street, is that with an interest in developing North Main Street, I really want to make sure that our residential areas, which are already really impacted by traffic along Main Street and cut-throughs and things like that, are not further impacted by having commercial development right off of, on the first parcel or so. And one of the, one of the things that I noticed when I first, you know, a few years ago, before I was on the board, was that on Rumford, which is a street right where the dairy barn is, you'll notice there's a three-floor residential building, which would not be allowed in the residential areas, but because it is in the GBD, that third floor was allowed, and it really is different from the rest of the neighborhood. So that's the background, and I'm going to turn it over to town planner Brian Skelly, who is going to talk some more about it.
Yeah, I have just a few slides kind of setting it up. The reason, the main reason tonight is to get feedback from the residents and business owners of, along this corridor, in order to determine if the planning board should actually introduce this as an article for this Fall Town Meeting this November. So like Dab said, this, the objective of this potential article is to change a zoning district of portions of 40 parcels, so 40 parcels are involved with this rezon. So that the zoning map exemplifies the current and most likely future use of the property. So we looked at all the properties along, at least one off of, one lot off of Main Street. So we're looking at the second and third in on each side of the, of Main. And looked at the current use, actually what's on the ground right now, and tried to determine what percentage of the lot was zoned commercial or GBD, and how, well, how much was zoned residential. The projects that are adjusted by this are pretty much anything that you're doing in any of these 40 parcels related to, to use. The dimensions are obviously a little bit bigger on Main Street as well, but this is, this is a, I would say, a significant change for a few parcels out of these 40. We're going to get into why it's necessarily only a few in just a second. We're going to have a map that we're going to be able to zoom in on here, so there's no way we could make one, so just bear with me for a second. So this is just the existing Main Street corridor that goes, you know, from Skilling's all the way up, basically to Uurn almost. So the suggested parcel rezoning, it's pretty hard to tell here, but most of these parcels that are also, the red ones are the ones that are all being potentially changed. Most of these see, all here that you see are blue, currently they are portions of GBD and residential. Portions of the, that it's, many people are asked, well, like, if a portion of my property is in the commercial zone, you know, could I sell portions of that land to the commercial property above me? And yes, you can, however, in most of these situations, the lots are small, smaller than what are already non-conforming, so the idea of making the parcel even smaller is not really possible. So for, out of these 40 parcels -- Yeah. There's a, we'll, we'll talk about that, but it actually is not, it is not pertinent here.
Okay.
Because the GBD is not technically a residential
Zone.
Zone. So the rule that we're talking about, well, Kat will go very quickly, but for the property owners that are here, it's good for you to know as well. If you're spanning two different zoning districts, no matter what they are, if they're residential, if they're both residential, not the case any, it's not the case here, but if you're spanning two different zones, which does happen obviously on the fringes, whichever one is more restrictive is the one that you have to follow. The only way that's not the case if, is if 80% of your lot is in the least restrictive zone. Again, not pertinent here because this is, this is a residential zone and a business zone, and that's the, that's what, that's how it's listed in the zoning code, so.
So if it's 80%?
For instance, in the RG and the RDA, looking on the fringes here, so the parcels that are here between the RG and the RDA and the RB10, if, if it's split 50-50, you're in the RG. If it's 80% in the RDA, then you're in the RDA. So which, you have to get 80% of your lot in the least restrictive one in order to get that, but.
But, but, I'm a little confused here. If you're, but you said that the 80/20 rule applies regardless of the two zones, so it would still apply if it's GBD and RG?
It's only for residential zones. It says that if it spans, if it spans two residential zones.
Residential zones.
So that's the difference.
Not relevant to this.
Not relevant to this conversation.
Totally forget about it.
So this is the actual effective change. Again, we're going to go back to the map and zoom in, and we'll have more of a discussion. I'm almost done, there's only one more slide. So this is the effective change of all the parcels. Yellow, so total of 40 parcels, 18 of the parcels we're considering as, as no change because the lot is already small enough that you can't be selling off to the commercial parcel to the north, or to, you know, abutting. Two parcels are official, we call upzones, meaning that they were residential and they're now becoming commercial. When upzone means it's more flexible, generally the lot is, it's worth more money.
It's assumed that it's worth more.
I'm sorry, it's assumed. It is a bad word, but in terms of upzone and downzone, but this is the term.
Those are the terms, but it's, right.
A total, 100%. So what we saw is that basically half of the parcels, it's not, it's not really affecting your use, really anything that you're doing too much on the property. A few parcels are being, are becoming more flexible. This is because there are business, there are businesses on these parcels, and for some reason they're zoned residential, they've been businesses for 30 years, but they're zoned residential. It doesn't make sense for them to be in this restrictive, non-conforming situation, so we want to bring them into compliance. Same thing for the downzone quote, is that these are older houses that have always been houses. They're, they're on smaller lots, they're going to be houses, and the idea of, of them being commercial doesn't, it doesn't really make sense. So that, this was
One question about the last slide.
Yes, please.
Just why the, I'm trying to, the mystery to unlock.
Yes.
What is the sequence, the address? I would have thought, I see a couple on Swanton Street, then we're going to Cobblestone, I just don't quite follow.
Oh, I think it was done by parcel ID. It happened to be zoned by, or it happened to be sorted by parcel ID, sorry about that.
Yeah, versus, versus location.
I think long
Yeah, because parcel IDs aren't, they're not necessarily like linear.
If going forward, probably we want to do them alphabetically by street, just so people can, you refer.
That's easy enough.
Anyway, not, sorry, thank you.
Nope. And yeah, okay. So this is the language that you received in your letter, the, which is essentially what I've just been saying for a little bit. But really, I'd like to open it up for questions. I also have PDFs and other things that we can, we can zoom in and out and look at and have a nice conversation for 45 minutes.
Could you please come to the table?
Yeah, unless you have near the microphone, the people at home can't hear you, unfortunately.
You're going to be talking and they're not going to hear.
Seventeen Canal Street, so if
Excuse me. Could you identify yourself and tell us where you live?
So Henklin, Seventeen Canal Street.
It's for our secretary, so your last name would be helpful?
Seventeen Canal?
Yes.
And your last name again?
L-I-N. So my question is about if our property is spanning GBD and
RG.
RG.
Mm-hmm.
So in terms of setback and open space requirement, which would be according based on GBD or RG?
So right now, it's, whatever on your property, whatever's in the RG is the RG. In terms of the, you're saying the use of the, you're just talking about table of dimensional requirements?
We have a partial property line that is considered to be GBD.
So everything that's in that GBD, just in that particular area, that could be very, I don't know how big it is specifically for you, but in that area alone, you, it is enacting GBD.
Okay.
So, but the thing is, I mean, it's not like you could put a GBD structure on there because it would be spanning both sides.
Yes, but for our neighbor, because it's GBD, then GBD can, can put a very close structure to that GBD property line. That's my
I don't think this would change, I don't, in this particular case, I don't think it would change anything for you in terms of your neighbor, meaning that your neighbor is on a property that is completely in the G, in the GBD, they're going to build whatever they can within the GBD, and so, and it's up until the property line.
Yeah, so that property is going to be considered to be rezoned too.
But is
Can I actually jump in because I'm just next to me?
Wait, wait, hold on one second.
It's going to map.
We're going to keep order here? Okay, so we're going to get a map, and then I do want to ask the town planner, because his memory is better than mine, are there not rules which dictate setbacks when you're up against another zone?
There are, yeah, there are.
So for instance, if part of this property is GBD, and there's a GBD right next to it, they would not have to use the setback relative to the RG, they would use the setbacks relative to the GBD, which are less restrictive.
That is correct.
So that is a concern. So they could build much closer to that side of the property because it's technically GBD.
It's not in a budding parcel. I mean, so it
That part of their parcel is in the GBD.
Right.
So this would affect your property adversely.
Are you asking because your neighbor would be upzoned?
Downzone. But currently it's GBD.
Currently, yeah.
Because we also have a partial popping line is on GBD.
So you can zoom in to, you can zoom in to
Zoom in so we can see better.
What is the parcel?
It's, it's on Canal Street, where is Canal Street these days?
Here's Canal.
Here, so.
Okay.
There's a partial popping line here.
Right. So Yeah, so this is, this is your parcel, like this, where you have, it looks like 35% in the GBD?
Yes.
And I don't know how big it is, something like
I'm actually, 15 Canal Street, so actually our side, it angles right, right at the spike with the vision of the two properties. So where we are, I'm 15, he's 17, so it's about, because I went down to town hall about a month ago, and it angles at about a 20-degree angle, and I think 8% is residential, so therefore abides to the residential code.
So that, yeah, so that
But that old house, which is in the 1950s, was originally residential, and then it got turned over to commercial. And we're curious if it's going to go back to residential.
Right, so it looks like, just to be clear, we're so, you're talking about, this parcel here is 1406 and 407, which is, so this is a double lane.
15 and 17 Canal Street.
Yep, yep. And you have 1475?
No, they, they have that other parcel.
Okay.
So this is their parcel right here.
That's what I was
Yes.
I get it.
And so, just this tiny little corner is in the GBD.
Yeah.
So this is currently a residential unit, and I believe we would be downvoting, downvoting.
Yes, downzone.
Downzoning that one.
So it's 1475.
Yeah.
So it'd be 1475 would become residential.
Yes.
Right.
Which would buffer you from
Which would buffer you from the
Right.
Proposed
Now, we should point, we should note that the owner of 1475 has sent us a letter, and they're, since they purchased
Public record.
Yes.
We should say, it's Scott Seaver.
Well, I mean
Let me just tell you the content of the letter. The owner of that property has purchased that property recently in the hopes of developing it as part of a commercial, or essentially he wants to put in residential units wrapping around Main Street. So he is concerned that this would essentially make it impossible for him to develop it the way he wants. We told him we would let other people know that we did have, I think the one, is that the one letter we got, or did we get more?
No, that was the only, that was the only letter that we got that basically said he bought the property under the pretense that this was impossible.
So I want to follow up with that, because you're looking at the Main Street A46. So for the neighbor property, you're going to rezon to residential. So if you're looking at the side setback, it's very close to that residential, the commercial GBD, you are going to rezon to residential. You can look at that too. So I have a very serious concern that if that property owner of our neighbor buying the Sakura lot, so if we remain to be GBD, that would end up with a similar situation.
Right, yes.
He's talking about the lot that's
Hold on.
Yeah.
We need, anyone who's in the audience, we need to get you on mic, so that the rest of the town can hear you, and so that it goes on tape.
Sounds like they'd like to be together, though.
Yeah, so
But they are neighbors.
Come on up and just, you know, anyone who comes up and just identify yourself.
My name is Russell, my name is Russell Gay, I live at 15 Canal Street.
So, go ahead.
So our concern is that if it's rezoned residential, what's the code for the setback?
It's
It'd be 15, right now it's 15 feet from the boundary line, but again, this is a 20-degree angle, basically, so you start off at 15, where there's that spike in the sidewalk, and then you go about 20 degrees. So unless he's building a, you know, a trapezoid, which is more like a modern piece of art, you know, that wouldn't necessarily be that cost-effective either, with different angles.
If 1475 is rezoned to residential, then they can leave the existing structure there, and that would be fine. They could rebuild on the existing structure's footprint.
That's right.
But if it's demolished and a new structure is built there, it has to meet all of the setbacks. It's, we'd have to go
So the current structure's
It would need, it would need to go through a special permit process.
It would need to go through a special permit process.
So there would be a review with, with the zoning Board of Appeals and
So the current structure is grandfathered, and they could, they could add a second story?
Yeah.
So there's a height requirement, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's 45, so it's, it's 45 feet in the GBD zones, so they could go up to 45 feet by right.
If it were residential.
Just in the GBD.
You're saying if it were rezoned, though, what's
If it's rezoned, it wouldn't be 45.
Yeah, well, I thought we were
If 1475 is rezoned
Then, then it's 40 feet and
It's 40 feet. It's two and a half stories.
Two and a half stories, okay.
Yeah.
And 70% open space.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let me phrase it a different way. It would be in the interest of what you're describing to have it rezoned residential.
Yes.
That's the point. And I have to say, I was on the planning board when that went before the town meeting in 2000.
Which was not long ago.
And I, I saw that, and I said, this doesn't look like it's going to be a good thing for the neighbors. Why is it, the answer is, it was moving. I was elected at the end of March, and it was presented at Spring Town Meeting, there was no way to undo it. So it went forward, there was a lot of good in GBD II and III, it basically got rid of new, like, automotive uses, where it got rid of fast food. There were some good things that went through with the changing of GBD II and III, but the way it cut into those residential neighborhoods, yours included, I saw it, but
This has been a threat for decades, because this was GBD before it was rezoned to II and III. I mean, we look back to the late '60s, it's been GBD for as far back as we cared to pull maps out of the drawer. So this is, one of the, one of the concerns that has been raised is whether or not this is restricting the amount. We did actually get one other letter from, from Tony Contu, who said that he was worried that this was removing commercials, commercial land from commercial use, and this town definitely needs more commercial businesses. But over the course of however long it's been GBD, it's never been developed. And so, and there's plenty of underdeveloped property on North Main Street, which is much better suited
Right.
than the neighborhood. So what, if you guys are, I hope we've answered your questions.
Well, I think it's a dialogue, a conversation here, and I want to add that if, if an argument is to be made about trying to encourage or promote commercial development, that what's getting proposed and what's been built, even in the rezoning, is all residential.
And that's the way it's been for
What we're getting is dense residential. I'm all for dense residential, but not on those side streets. It's just the wrong place for them. You've got two families and single families.
So if you can go, go to looking at A46, so let's keep going to
Uh, no.
It's towards, it's towards downtown.
To south.
Other way, yeah.
So keep going, keep going.
Further down Main.
Keep going. Okay. So that four, so, oh, 14-19, so that resident, that GBD is going to be rezoned to residential, right?
Correct.
So that's next, next lot is A46 Main Street. So if, essentially that property being developed with no setback close to 14-19. It's very close to, to, to the property line of 14
Yeah.
19.
It exists, yeah, again, that's because it is
Because GBD.
It's GBD, and anyone who walks by or goes by that lot recognizes how, how minimal a footprint that large three-story house has.
Yes.
And it's really, the residents are underserved by the amount of land for that structure.
Yes.
So, yeah, we, we looked at that in detail, we looked at each of these properties in detail, and it really stands out as being subpar residential housing.
I want to throw out another thought, too. The, back to the downsizing and what that does, although there is this broad, it's a big American concept that frankly belongs back in the early 20th century, that commercial is the highest and best use in Winchester. We've seen how the market works, and the reality is the market's delivering residential because with the
Old day.
value of housing and the desirability of housing within, not just 128, but within a community like this, with some school system, train access and so on. So I don't believe that in reality, although we're stuck, I mean, you're using the proper language, I understand it, it is the language, but the concept that this is somehow taking away value from the residents, I just don't buy it. I think that even with the teardowns that are proliferating, we have teardown maps, which may be relevant to this topic, that we know how this neighborhood's being slammed, and the reasons it's being slammed is because highest and best use is residential, not commercial.
So even for that four, A46 property is being built as a first floor as a commercial, but second floor and third floor is apartment. So that's residential too.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, residential is definitely your biggest bang for your buck if, to make profit in this town. I, if you go, if we've answered your questions, I don't mean to push you away, I just want to
But it's also okay to make statements.
We address our concerns.
You can always come back.
That's just for questions.
Because that's the current example, just sitting all day.
Yeah. I mean, I think one thing that, if no one else has an immediate question, someone, okay, so why don't we have
I actually have a question about your situation, but I do have some remarks that I have.
Yeah, that's true.
Why don't you come forward, please? Come forward.
He took the words right out of my mouth.
And your name.
My apologies, spring water. Okay. Let's see. I brought some things, I'll give you after. They're, they're photographs, I should identify myself. I'm Cheryl Pierce, and I am the owner of 1445 and 1446 on Water Street. Hold on one second.
On Water Street?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
She's over Liz likes the corner, and I've never gotten her to come forward.
Is it up here?
No, 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 it's right down there.
Yeah, I was like, I thought it was
Can you see me?
Right there. Keep going.
Yeah, you're going to go over, there I am.
Here you go.
Okay.
Hi. Okay. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Cheryl Pierce, and I own parcels 1445 and 1446. Parcel 1446 is currently zoned GBD II, and parcel 1445 is currently partially zoned GBD II. Under your proposal, both of my parcels would be rezoned RG. I want to explain to you why my parcels should not be rezoned. My grandparents purchased 905 Main Street in the 1920s and acquired my parcels 8-10 Water Street in 1948. Having grown up here with generations of family, I can speak to the character of this area, both past and present. You stated in your letter that the 1997 master plan caused many lots to be rezoned from RG to GBD. My parcels, however, have always been zoned for business purposes. My two-family house circa 1927 was built on this site for that reason. In the 1930s, my property was used as a hair salon. Zoning maps from 1953, 1963, and 1973 and 1991 to the present, all evidence that my parcels were commercially zoned. I visited the building department recently, and Janine Virella showed me a map from 1991. She explained that parcels within 150 feet of Main Street, like mine, have always been commercially zoned. My property at the corner of Water and Main Streets sits at a four-way, heavily trafficked intersection that has been a hub of commerce for decades. This area has been home to a candy store, a butcher, a pharmacy, a donut shop, and pet This area has been home to a candy store, a butcher, a pharmacy, a donut shop, and pet shop, and at one time, the tannery vigs and cobb for which my grandfather worked. It has always made sense that business zoning is the most appropriate for my property. These maps speak to the historical reasons that warrant commercial zoning for my properties. Current practical considerations weigh even more strongly in favor of commercial zoning, and this is why. Water Street is residential in name, but my location on it is unique. I am removed from the real start of the neighborhood, and my property, unlike the others that the board proposes to rezone, directly faces a commercial property. Point one, I am removed from the real start of the neighborhood. Even on paper, my property does not look like it is part of the neighborhood. It's not. I directly face the Winchester Optical Shop and a parking lot. To my right is a strip mall, its alley, another parking lot, and the dairy barn. Because my property is part of this commercial area, I am subject to all of the associated traffic, noise, and smells of living in a commercial area. UPS and FedEx arrive twice daily, each for the Winchester Optical Shop and Tyler and Sash. Vans block the entrance to my driveway and walkway, park in front of my pivot hedge on parcel fourteen forty-five or directly across from my property under a no parking sign. They sometimes enter Water Street and park against traffic in front of my pine tree. Winchester police often park in front of my house waiting for speeders at the intersection. Photos document move vans and landscapers' dump trucks with elongated equipment beds, all vacated as people do business, eat in Andrea's, or takeout. I've had to ask them not to damage shrubbery or to move if I am entering, exiting my driveway. I've seen produce trucks, trucks unload right by my property. The sidewalk has been crushed due to, due to the weight of heavy commercial vehicles. Cars proc across from my walkway to grab a quick bite or stop to adjust beverage containers and open a snack before heading down Water Street. This loading, unloading, parking, and other commercial activity happens only in front of my parcels and does not occur further down Water Street. The four-way intersection of Water, Swanton, and Main Streets, also known as Route thirty-eight, a direct route to I ninety-five, is an ongoing cacophony. A central artery into Winchester and beyond, it pulses with traffic, and eighteen-wheelers such as Cape Cod Express, Blue Shark Transit, Bronze Express, waste trucks, flatbed trucks hauling construction equipment, front loaders, beverage distribution trucks for Coke, Pepsi, and liquor, often idling at the stoplight. From my kitchen, I hear the hourly arrival of the one thirty-four bus, its compressor hissing and popping at the light, the honking of horns or police and fire sirens as they come up from the center of town. All of this is punctuated by the new verbal crossing system. Windows open, I hear the workings of the strip mall, the barking of dogs at Winchester Animal Clinic and Barstow's grooming, business discussions conducted in the alley, a chair stationed for that purpose. This noise is unique to my parcels because I am so close to Main Street. It is also unique to my parcels because I am on the same level as Main Street, because Water Street slopes downward as it moves away from Main Street, providing a natural noise barrier. Other parcels on Water Street simply do not have the same noise conditions. In the evening, I have the glow of the Winchester Optical sign beaming in my living room and Andrea's neon red sign visible from my dining room table. I see trash and a TJ Maxx cart from the window at my kitchen sink. The alley can draw strangers, taking refuge by the parking lot between the strip mall and the dairy barn. In August, I had to call the police on a Saturday at eight thirty AM, before those businesses opened, to report a potential domestic assault in progress. My grandmother also had these issues in her day. Point two, my property, unlike the others this board proposes to rezone, actually faces commercial property. As mentioned earlier, my parcels are unlike the other candidates for proposed rezoning, in that my property actually faces commercial property. In the winter, all of the snow that is plowed out from the parking lot is dumped onto the sidewalk in front of my house to grow higher each storm until spilling over my wall and onto my property. In summary, the inherent commercial nature of the location has remained a constant for decades. I fear my property is exceedingly difficult to market if it is limited to residential use. I realize that a line will need to be drawn somewhere. However, if this board looks at my property and the dominance of the business presence surrounding it, I know that you will understand that the residential-to-business line should not be drawn as currently proposed. Keeping my property zoned as GBD two will not jeopardize the integrity of the neighborhood as it is already part of the commercial district and not the residential neighborhood. Thank you for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. And, uh, I have photographs. I really...
Yeah, that's...
Yes, I do. I do, I do. No, pictures are always worth a thousand words. They're much planning board's words. They are much better than text.
Thank you very much.
Could you comment on fourteen forty-five? If my recollection is, there is nothing built on that lot at present.
No, not at present. It is being used as a residential, excuse me, residential area. Um, but, you know, I think the character of the neighborhood kind of, you know, extends into that area as well. I mean, if I'm standing on my
Well, I'm gonna tell you...
fourteen forty-five, I can, I can still hear and see the, the commercial movement.
Can we just Google street view?
So, so, I, I guess my point about bringing up fourteen forty-five is that it's a potential residential or commercial building, which would definitely go into the neighborhood.
Well, I think, you know, the area is commercial, and the impacts on my property are and will continue to be commercial, notwithstanding that that's...
You've, you've made a very strong argument for fourteen forty-six. Fourteen forty-five is, it, it faces a residential property and it abuts a residential property. And certainly, my concern, and I'm just stating this, I'm not saying you don't have good argument, is that if fourteen forty, oh, now I've already forgotten which is which.
Oh, there you go.
Yes, if, if the, if the lot which does not have a building on it currently is built to a commercial use, then that would certainly be in the neighborhood.
This is you?
Yeah, no, no, I'm brown.
Ah, sorry, I thought that was, yeah, yeah.
And, and the empty lot, or the, I should say, the lot to the right of it.
You were saying it was reused as commercial, but that's built as residential.
Oh, actually, yes.
But the hairdresser's working in a house.
Yes, I have plumbing for that. In fact, I had lockers come by and just, I, they were doing work in my basement a year ago, and David asked me, "What was all this extraneous piping?" And I brought him upstairs to my mother's bedroom and said, "You see the two holes in the floor?" Because my grandmother...
I'm gonna go back to my point that I made before.
Oh, sure.
You've got, to my eye, an attractive house.
Oh, thank you. I think it is. Thank you.
And I value that house.
Oh, I do, too.
Whether you do or not, I value that house.
I do, too. No, no, no. I see, I think, I think you're fearful that in terms of commercial, you're thinking, um, another pizza place. I mean, I, when I look, well, when I look...
You misunderstand.
Okay, when I look at, at commercial properties, I'm thinking of Pierce Insurance, which still maintains the architectural intre- integrity of the structure, or like the Mosley House, which is...
That's not gonna...
Unfortunately, that's not what we're seeing. What we're seeing is, um, for instance, if we go down to, um, uh, the, um, well, certainly on Canal Street, the fear, the, the plan is to put a twenty, twenty-unit residential multi-story structure.
That's it.
And if we go down to, can we go down to the Main Street, um, location where, um, the bagel place is and the garage? That would be going the other direction.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we keep an eye on the time. We have twenty minutes left.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, no, no.
Make sure that we listen to other people. Just keep going.
Keep going, yeah.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Well, hold on one sec. Let's, let's finish this one off. Keep going. Okay, keep going. Whee, one, one more. Okay.
Oh, look.
Uh, no, one more.
But that's, but that's, that's what's...
Okay, right, so let me, wait, hold on a second. Let me, let me just point out this. So, uh, this is, if you can scroll back so we can see this. So this, woo! There is currently a plan on the works to take out this duplex on the side street and to put a large commercial building wrapping all the way around this corner. And this duplex would be removed in order to put in a, essentially a driveway to get into the parking structure. Am I correct? So we're not concerned about individual buildings remaining and being changed in use. We're really concerned about them being totally removed and subsumed into large
That's right.
commercial buildings.
I, I understand.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I understand your point, but I think in terms of planning, we also have a critical responsibility to, in terms of safety, that I, I can't envision in front of those parcels, one of those step-two kids little green neon signs saying, "Children at play." I mean, if there was a child chasing a ball out my driveway with all of the, you know, equipment and things that you see, I think we're doing our children a disservice to allow that.
We don't.
It, it, it can't. It wouldn't be right. You wouldn't do it in a school zone, and...
But we can't, if, if you choose to sell your property to another owner who keeps it residential, there may be children there.
And they won't be safe. I mean...
But, but there's, but, but...
They won't be.
But that's not within the bounds of this board to say you can't let your child play outside.
No, but I think in terms of zoning, you have a responsibility to protect them ahead of time and not put them in harm's way in a residential property that really isn't residential. It doesn't feel, look, sound, and behave residential. I don't want my children...
Okay, but it's been residential for like a hundred years?
You're right, and that's, that's a very important point, because, right, seventy-five years ago, one of my uncles was crossing Swanton Street and almost killed by a truck. He's alive today, but there are the same trucks in that intersection, and I would hate to see that happen again. I just would feel very responsible.
I mean, taking that step further, so then no residential, there shouldn't be any residential units along Main Street?
On Main Street?
Even on Main, I mean...
I grew up on Main Street. I mean, I grew up, actually, my grandparents, as I explained, own nine oh five. I spent the first sixteen years of my life there, and I can tell you, there were major concerns my parents had. Number one, a Main Street in the front and a railroad track in the back. I was told to be mindful of both, but children do what they do. And one day, when my cat got out, I ran to save it from the railroad track as the train was coming. I lived to tell about it, and the cat died of old age. But, you know, kids do stupid things.
I mean, I, I think we appreciate your concerns, and I don't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, no, no.
I know there are other people who want to speak. And, and you do bring a very unique perspective, having...
It's a unique property. I understand. I support what you're doing.
The one thing I think, though, should be made clear, any existing use will remain. So if, if there's any use that's going on, we don't take away...
We're, yeah, we're not, that is one thing, and if it's, somehow it's perceived that, what, yeah, I mean, the goal was to, to reflect what's there.
Oh, I understand, but I think, I mean, you cannot ignore what the reality is of the space. And I think safety is an issue. But I understand if something is residential or, you know, closely borders. I mean, I think perhaps maybe what these other gentlemen were talking about, you know, or, because I've looked at all the properties. I've been everywhere. Like on Cobblestone and some of these other areas, it makes complete sense. Or behind what I call the Marchese building, but it's the Andrea's building.
Okay, thank you very much. I know there are a couple of other people who would like to hand.
Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
So why don't we get one person to come forward, and then another, if you want to, while they're coming forward.
Yeah, I was starting to say that there's a lot of value in having a two-family structure there, that they provide a buffer in terms of the scale. It isn't just the use, but it's the scale of the building that's transitioning from Main Street into the neighborhood, so your property is actually helping to protect all of the other houses down the street.
Yeah, it acts as a buffer.
Right, and that's the role of a lot of these properties, you know, but, uh, you know...
Okay, it's become a role.
There's a safety.
Yeah, thank you. Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Roy Sylvman at twelve Salem Street.
Oh, look at it.
Okay, it's a, it's a block north.
Come on, I'll tell you where I'm at.
It, actually, it's fifteen dash one thirty-seven.
Uh, so...
Yeah, the one on the left.
Oh, you're on the first...
This, this one?
Yes, yes. And my question is, um, and you may have already addressed it, but I'm just not clear about it. Uh, this is a two-family structure. Each unit is a condominium. Um, does any of this have any, does that have any bearing on how this, this parcel would be treated? Does it make any difference that it's...
Let's go back to the map to see exactly, um, so on Salem Street.
Uh, fifteen, one thirty-seven, and one thirty-eight, just to the right there. That's it, yeah.
So if we go up to see what you are now...
I want to jump in.
Yeah, just jump while I'm going there.
Especially because it's a condo. You've got two separate owners.
Correct.
The, and it's new construction.
Yeah.
It seems, I mean, I would say as a matter of just the reality of the market, the conversion of that to any kind of multifamily or would have to be combined. Though, what we're talking about, by the way, for most of these properties would be what I, what's called parcel assembly, meaning a developer comes in and he actually needs at least two parcels to do the kind of large-scale work that he's describing. The opportunity to go into your house with two owners is like zilch.
It's not gonna happen, yeah.
So, I mean, I bet money we can go lunch and I'm, I'm gonna take the nickel.
Yeah, now, the nature of my question was just information, yeah, yeah.
Like not there, because of the nature of it all being new construction and being two-family, that are two different owners, two property owners, that it's, no developer's going to go near it.
It's the other one, yeah.
So fifteen, one thirty-seven.
You're gonna be selling again in some time and whatever, before you die, hopefully, but, um, cash out, but you'll see the appreciation and...
So currently, it's...
No developer's gonna look at you.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to offer a substantial amount of money to buy out both people.
To buy, yeah.
Currently, you're in a mix of RG and GBD.
Right.
And the proposal would be to move an entire lot into RG.
RG.
Which is what the two fam- that's where, that's the two families.
And that's the two-family zoning anyway.
But, we...
So it really doesn't affect it from the zoning.
Before we, before we completely, completely, um, say that, I mean, I would say yes, but you also still, um, we can, we can look, um, to see exactly like your current setbacks. I mean, I mean, to, meaning I don't want necessarily say you're completely, there's nothing... You can always do the use, the, the use in the RG, you can always do a two-family.
Right.
But depending upon exactly where your house sits on that lot, we can, we can talk about that further.
Okay.
It could be because it was partially built on the GBD that some of the existing setbacks would be smaller than would be allowed under the RG.
I see.
But since they're existing...
It's grandfathered in, and it just, it's not affected until you want to make a change.
Most of the, most of the lots in this neighborhood are noncompliant anyway.
Okay.
A very large portion.
Yeah.
And through in Winchester, in a large part of town.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me, let me see if someone else wants, someone who hasn't spoken. So, have an answer for the question?
Very, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'm Steve Blank. I'm from Two Watson Place, and I don't...
Last name for our secretary?
Steve Blank, B-L-A-N-K. Uh, and, uh, so I, I don't really know too many of the implications. I saw the letter. I haven't seen the map. So I, and what I'm particularly curious about is, you know, we're on the corner of Watson and Sheridan Circle. Um, a little bit, little bit further north, a little further north.
Further north, yeah.
Pictures, pictures worth a thousand words.
I'm sorry.
This is Sheridan Circle, okay.
Okay, sorry. So, yeah, we're fourteen two nineteen, fourteen two twenty.
It's right here, this one.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a, that's a new, a newly built home.
Yeah, ten years old, eleven years old. Uh, so what I was interested in is, you know, for our property and our neighbor's property, I think he originally acquired those and then subdivided and built.
Oh, I know those.
And he lives in that, Paul. And, um, and I'm also curious about the area along Main Street, because as I understand, there was a time when there was some question about building some kind of a strip mall or something, and I don't know whether the changes are gonna affect just our property or what changes might apply on Main Street there and, or the parking lot for Creative Corner.
All good questions.
Certainly questions. Um, the Creative Corner on the two lots you're, I believe you're talking about, are these right here?
Well, green, the green section is the Creative Corner parking lot. Across the street from, across Sheridan Circle is the building. And those are my, yeah.
Is it currently also being used as a parking lot?
Uh, two twelve is, I think two eleven is, is possibly, yeah.
Pretty much, these are supposed to be used for housing. And that was actually in the memorandum of understanding that was drawn up at the time. Town meeting actually rezoned this, and so these two, as far as a lot of people are concerned, have, they should have been built as, I believe, two-family homes. So, so there is, um, it's, I believe those are, that's in the memorandum of understanding. So unless they violate that and put in a commercial enterprise, then that would be something else. Um, but we're not talking about touching any property which actually has, which borders Main Street.
So I'm sorry, the key, so the orange, what's...
The orange is, is, uh, general, this is what it current, this is general business district.
Okay.
So these, these parcels, for, this was, this was definitely an anomaly that, that these were, um, that these were even zoned.
It's a separate deal. Maybe we should go back.
Well, I, I heard there was something about, um... Well, I heard there was something about affordable housing.
I think, yes.
But it didn't even follow, there was a few things that didn't follow this one hundred and fifty-foot rule. You can see these, these parcels obviously are way bigger than a hundred and fifty feet, because these actually used to be the light industrial zone, this one here, this one here, this one here, and those got all rezoned to GBD three because we wanted, people wanted to get rid of the light industrial uses along this residential mixed-use corridor. These, on the other hand, I'm not sure how it happened, because it's, it's real smack in the middle of the RG because of this buffer, so these have been houses even before this new house, there were houses there.
I think there was actually the church there.
Yeah, there was a, there was a one-story church building.
On fourteen twenty, two twenty?
I believe so.
Yeah, they had something.
Yeah, and the rectory is two ten, or, either two oh seven or two ten.
Go ahead.
It was a swamp building, the parish owned it.
So it certainly is an anomaly that, it won't, again, it's not gonna, the current use is residential, and we just want to have the zoning reflect that use.
We'll say this, over time, which, like, again, you're in a new build, so it's irrelevant, but, you know, this board, and I've seen eighteen years on the board, but imagine your parcel fifty years from now, so let's do it right and get it into the zone that...
And my question is much more, because of the parking lot, we have a direct line of site to Main Street and to the parcels along Main Street, so my questions are much more around what may be happening to those, and if I understand you correctly, all of those are going to be...
Remain.
They're gonna remain...
These are all going to remain, these could be, these should have been built out, what, twenty, fifteen, eleven years ago?
No, 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 not that long ago, because I was on the, I was on the board.
The select...
The last, yeah.
So then...
No, I was, no, no, sorry, no, I had just, I had just ruled off the board as selectmen, but onto the, onto the plan board.
Okay, so, so that is certainly something that we plan on looking into and is trying to understand why those have yet to be developed according to the understanding that was made with the town.
Okay.
I mean, that's technically under the purview of the select board.
That's right.
Because they make land decisions and draw contracts, but that's certainly from a planning perspective, something we're interested in figuring out.
Right.
How to move it along.
I also remember when I was lining up my financing, that there was some kind of extra complication that came up, and I think it had more to do with the zone for purpose, so perhaps just address it. Can I just take a quick picture of that map?
I can send it to you.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Better yet.
I know you've got my name in the...
And then, because I was explaining, and it's still on my mind, to the last fellow who spoke, I just think we ought to be using the phrase parcel assembly, so people understand that that's really where the concern is.
Parcel assembly, yeah.
Yeah, that, I think that's a very good idea.
We're trying to prevent parcel assembly.
And that's when you get these brand things that are totally...
Yeah, push more on.
Yeah, let's see, we've got, we've got another...
Seven minutes.
Well, it says, it says...
Oh, eight oh five.
Eight oh five, so we have another ten minutes, so how, let me just see, how many more people, how many more people wish to speak? If you could raise your hands, please, just so I know how many.
Just the one?
Just two people? So why don't we, why don't we, I apologize, but we'll give you guys four minutes apiece, so we can have two minutes to wrap up.
All right, okay.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, so...
Hi, how are you? Ben Albionni, eighteen and twenty Clock Street, which you actually brought up about the development there.
Yes.
We had purchased that development after it was rezoned in nineteen ninety-seven in the master plan, and that was why we purchased it, in that, and this rezoning would hurt the value of that property.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and secondly, you know, we don't own the used car lot, like you had just said that we're trying to do a development.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply you owned it. I know that there's development going on around that corner, and the plans that we saw included, so I, I apologize.
Okay, because, yeah.
Didn't see plans.
Not with the used car lot involved, because we don't own it, that, never, you've never seen those.
We have, we have seen, we have heard about plans which include that entire corner in taking those homes.
Oh, I haven't seen those plans, but that's, that's okay. That's, we don't, we've never owned the used car lot, we have no, we have no agreement with the used car lot, we have nothing to do with the used car lot. That's never been set forth in front. We have, we have presented a plan as far as with Bagaland and the truck terminal, but that doesn't include...
Well, you know, I apologize, and maybe I'm confusing you with another, another development.
Okay, I, I don't know.
Really apologize.
That's, no, that's okay, I, I, we can, we can look at it.
Yeah, no, we just want to make sure that all of our heads are in the right place.
Yeah, I don't know who I am.
No, that's all right.
I apologize.
Yeah, we, we have, we, I do not own the used car lot there, that's not involved, I do own the Blue Two family behind it.
Right, I know that there's certainly, there's, yeah, okay.
And I also have the parcel, which is Bagaland, if you go further down the street.
Right, 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 right.
Right there, that, and Bagaland there, which we're, you know, talking about doing a development, that's, that's, that's not involved in your zoning, because that's...
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
That's not involved in the rezoning, but as far as my stance is concerned, and ours as a company, is that we had purchased that in, you guys had rezoned that in nineteen ninety-seven in the master plan, and...
Yep.
That's, that's why we had purchased that, and you do have to, even if there is a fifteen-foot buffer zone that you need to have planted and everything like that, it's not like you'd have a house directly and then have a gigantic, there's a fifteen-foot buffer zone that needs to happen in between those...
Between business and residential.
Exactly, so it's not...
Are you talking about the blue house right now?
I'm talking about any development on this street, that you'd need, in order between the two different zonings, there's a fifteen-foot...
But you own the blue house.
I, yes, that's what I said, yes, I own the blue house.
And you are contemplating demolishing the blue house.
Um, I, we haven't put, set a plan to do that.
But that's what you're concerned about.
But the concern you're concerned is...
My concern is that we, that we bought that as a, you know, as, that was something that we were able to do, not, you know...
Yeah.
That's, it's the same thing all the way up the street, is there are properties as far as, again, I don't own them, whether it be the Mineke and the, the unit behind it, those, those lots themselves are not attractive, I mean, North Main Street in Winchester could look a lot better than it does, and, you know, they're just, I think this is, you have a ten-foot setback from the front of, from the, from Main Street as far as where you can build, and then you have a fifteen-foot buffer zone between the two properties, so if you were to take, you'd look at the building and you have a ten-foot setback from the street, and then a fifteen-foot setback, that makes your building relatively...
It's narrow.
It's a very narrow building, and then you need the parking, which everyone wants the parking in the back of the property, instead of it being on the front, that, again, you're, you're making, you're really slicing that building development.
So your concern is that if you wanted to develop along Main Street, you need the extra depth that that in a parcel gives?
With the parking requirements, because I believe that that's two spaces per unit, so you need the parking requirement there, you have the setback, you have the buffer zone, you're shrinking that, that development area dramatically.
We understand.
Okay.
It's the parcel assembly.
Yeah, so that's, you know, it was changed in ninety-seven, and I think that, you know...
And I apologize to note...
And that's, that's, that's all I need.
You have one more minute.
What was, what was the address of that parcel by the...
The parts of the blue house you're talking about, or?
Yeah.
The blue house is eighteen and twenty Clock Street.
Thanks, okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one more person?
Thanks for coming.
Hi, Jennifer Roma.
Could you please, could you repeat that with...
Jennifer Roma?
And you are...
With, with respect to fourteen forty-five and fourteen forty-six, eight to ten Water Street.
Oh, okay, we're back on Water Street, okay.
So just very briefly, I just had a few questions, actually. The first being, I know you had mentioned there was extensive research done into choosing which parcels were going to be rezoned and an analysis done, I was wondering if you could kind of explain what was, what was done?
Well, we, we looked at the properties and we tried to determine what their current use was, and so if the current use was residential and appeared to have been residential for some time, then we thought the zoning should reflect that. There are certainly properties, for instance, the J.J. Loftus property, which has been commercial for a long time.
No, but what's, what's the address or location, street, I don't know where we are, geographic reference.
It's, it's, it's north on Main Street, I think it's like the...
Well, let's get, we'll go there some, we'll stay here.
But there's certainly, there's at least that one property which has definitely been commercial for some time, so we have left it as GBD, and I believe there's one other GBD property, I can't remember. It's in the table.
Yeah.
So that's the sort of thing, is we looked at existing uses, and, you know, if it's been residential for fifty, sixty, seventy years, and you can tell that by the age of the house or the structure on the property, then we deem that to be residential use. So that, I guess that's the depth of our analysis.
That, that was all that was done with respect to...
We're trying to reflect what's there, so whatever was there, that's what, I mean, it's not a comp, it's not supposed to be complicated, yeah, yeah.
I want to expand and say, speaking for myself, the business about this parcel assembly, such as we're hearing about, would result in, with the current zoning, substantial impacts, as we're starting to see these parcels assembled, you need to get, the developer needs something on Main Street and the depth going into these side streets, that the impact on the side streets is negative, it's detrimental to these neighborhoods, so that's the, that's the main objective, and it's a loss also of a certain type of housing that we value.
So there, there was a study done showing that it was detrimental to these neighborhoods?
Oh, we're hearing from people, you've heard from some already sitting behind you who are nodding their heads right now.
Right, I know what I meant, just in advance of determining what was going to be rezoned. There was some type of study performed?
No, I would say it's, if it's resident, if it's a residential street now, meaning you turn left off Main Street, and is it...
It's residential, yeah.
Uh, I think it's a little bit off, well, I just want to say also east of, a few on, it looks like a few on east, but mainly to the west of Main Street, and you're, you've turned the corner and it's a street of houses, and we believe that it's in the interest, that's a broad principle, that it's in the interest of the neighborhoods to be fronting on and looking across the street, outside across the street at another house, rather than...
At another house, right.
Rather than a large, and remember, the heights change as well, a lot changes when you move into the GBD zone, you're into, well, we keep saying commercial, but what's reality is, these are very large-scale apartment blocks and, or condos, and that to have that looming down over the house, the big thing, we know that, just as residents of the town too, how much, nobody really wants that to happen to them.
Right.
And this is a special, and we have a teardown map, that is a study.
Okay.
And we can show you, are you able to bring that up?
I just want to point out, we're talking about three minutes left in this discussion.
It's a, it's a, the substantial impacts have already been seen in the, in that part of town.
Okay, what was the name of that?
It's, it's the, so it's a, a map of all the tear downs that are in, that are in town, and it has a, it's just a, a map of the whole town, and it shows exactly when and where tear downs occur.
Okay, great.
So is there a concern you want to bring to us? We have limited, I don't want to cut you off, but...
Uh, no, I just, I just have one more question, if you don't mind.
Sure, no, we're in.
So you had said it was important that these properties not face other commercial properties, so...
We keep saying commercial.
Okay.
And I want to make it clear, the, actually, the market has its own mind, whatever, and the market's delivering large-scale residential, which is allowed in GBD, so the GBD two and three, so, yes, commercial, but actually, it's also, when you end up with the zoning that we have for those large-scale apartment buildings, not only will you get a very tall building, you're gonna have lights on all over these buildings, and you're gonna have an entrance into some kind of parking behind them, which means on the side street is where it will be accessed, it's a very substantial impact.
Okay, but just very briefly, with respect to the point that it's important that houses face other houses, would you be amenable to rezoning only fourteen dash forty-five and not fourteen dash forty-six for that reason?
Well, I think the, that's part of what we're looking to do is to, is to maintain the feel of a neighborhood, and how a house is facing is certainly part of it, but as Heather pointed out, the existence of that structure, for instance, fourteen forty-five, serves as a buffer to the rest of the street, and it is obviously a residential lot.
Yeah, no, I was saying, keeping, so if you rezone fourteen forty-five to RG to keep that as a buffer zone, but to keep fourteen forty-six GBD, would you be amenable to that?
Fourteen forty-six is even...
What is it?
No, fourteen, no, so you guys, so, yeah.
I'm getting the numbers confused.
Forty-six is closer to Main Street, forty-five is further away.
Yeah, I'm in particular saying the structure on fourteen forty-six...
What, can we look at it?
Is, it's, it's the, it's the two families, it's the flats or however the name is. That is definitely a residential-looking structure, and it leads, it lends itself to the residential neighbor, sense of the neighborhood. I mean, I live, I live right here, and so when I walk down Water Street, I personally don't consider I've hit commercial until I'm past that structure.
Right.
But that's, I, I understand that there are different opinions on this, so, so this is just my opinion.
No, I understand, I just think it being facing commercial property, it's definitely dissimilar than the other parcels that you've chosen to rezone here, so...
You mean it's there, are you aware of that?
No, no, I'm not, I'm just here...
Yeah, I...
Interested citizen, that's fine.
That's, I mean, that's, that's something the board can certainly discuss.
Okay.
Well, just then, as a follow-up, since I'm being quoted, I do want to say, we also just, and I know Heather Hanon will speak to this, Betsy will, I suspect, and so did, but that we, I think collectively, have an agreement that we really value the range of housing types in this town, and that, that kind of housing is something that we will, just, we really want to make sure we don't lose it, so there's, there's that, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think rezoning it, though, you can still use it as a single-family or two-family under the GBD designation, so you're not automatically using that housing if you keep it zoned as such.
But we cannot guarantee that it will be there.
It will be sold like the usual...
It'd be as to something else.
The concern we have is not with the existing owners and their dedication to the neighborhood. Our concern is when those properties change hands, what happens to the neighborhood then?
Right.
And this has been a stable neighborhood in the sense that it is residential on Water Street, except granted for the large parking lot where the optical shop is, but our concern is what this is going to look like in thirty or forty or fifty years, and whether it maintains that residential nature. Now granted, it's been GBD for a very long time, but the development pressures we're seeing are very different from any other stage in Winchester's history.
Right.
I mean, I look around me in my home, and I see within two blocks, over the last ten years, essentially, six or seven tear downs plus copse's of woods removed, three double units, the pressure on my neighborhood is intense, and I'm just a block away, and I could, you know, we can tour that neighborhood, and I can tell you that the pressure to develop is unlike anything we've seen in Winchester before. The homes are going for prime rates, and when they look at a piece of property, they And when they look at a piece of property, they don't look at what it is worth now, they look at it...
What it might be worth.
What it might be if I buy it. And again, this is...
Developers, builders.
Developers look at it. And, and this is not a new concept. One of the previous board members called this essentially, I believe he called it tornado zoning. What happens if you removed all the buildings and you could build whatever you want? And that's essentially what developers do. I mean, they're there to maximize their profit, which is what they do. And they look at a plot of land and they say, what can I, what, what's this, what's, what are the lots I can put together and what's the size of the property I could build? And that's what they're going to go for. And that's, I mean, those are allowed by the rules and that's what they go for. So there's always this tension between allowing growth and trying to retain what we see as important in, in this case, in the neighborhoods. And now I've stolen all the rest of your time, I apologize.
That's fine, thank you.
Well, we now actually do have to move on to our next topic. And thank you very much and...
Thank you everyone for coming.
And if you still have more things that you'd like to tell us about, if you have opinions you don't feel have been voiced, please write to us. We are planningboard@winchester.us and we will hear your voices. So thank you very much. And we're now going to unfortunately, or fortunately, have to move on to our discussion of Highland Ave.
Yes, you should ask out loud.
Just have a quick question. When will you guys be voting on this?
Oh, there is, yeah.
Uh, so, uh, the night of September twenty-fifth, um, we will be talking, I'm sorry, um, our hearing is going to be on October second.
September twenty-fifth.
So, well, September twenty-fifth is we're going, certainly to be talking about it again. And October second is going to be the hearing, which that's when we'll probably, that's what, at that point, we will know whether this is going to be at least moved forward or not.
Yeah, to the floor of town meeting.
Tell your neighbors.
It's all about neighborhood scale.
Yep, that's what it's...
Okay.
As forecast, yeah, you've still got a quarter.
Right, you're, you're done, you're done, Ski.
Okay, so...
I'm glad I made it to part of the...
Thank you for sticking around. I hope you are feeling well. And, um...
I can take it.
And so next we will be moving to Highland Ave. And we have the proponent, Mr. Craig Miller, if you want to come forward. And we have an hour allotted to this, so if you could take ten minutes to tell us what the differences in your proposals and we'll move on to a discussion.
Okay, thanks. One, just, I have a few, a few of the things that you sent today. So I got the auto turn didn't fit in the plan, the response to engineers comments and the quick trees removal sketch that you did.
Great, thanks. So since the last time we met, we addressed all of the comments that were submitted by engineering department, submitted, resubmitted those late last week with written responses and changed plans. We also, as Brian just kind of mentioned, we prepared in the last day or two, submitted, I think today, I think going today, the tree plan. The board had asked me to identify the number of twelve inch diameter acreage trees that would be taken down. So I, we created a plan for that. And we've also submitted an auto turn study that shows the different fire apparatus and how they would navigate the hammerhead turn. So that's the difference. I have to apologize because there was a series of verbal comments that I received at the last meeting, most notably the eighteen foot wide roadway. We didn't have a chance to get that into the revision and we will in the next couple of days. So there were two or three things that the board had asked me verbally in our last meeting, the eighteen foot width on the roadway. We're going to make that change in the next several days concurrent with our, we just recently received comments from VHB. So as we address the VHB comments, we're going to take into account the eighteen foot road and shrink that because on the latest plans it's twenty feet wide still and shouldn't be. Uh, we're going to create a Homers Association document in the next couple of days and get that into use so the town council can review it. That was another item that was requested. We have submitted a landscape plan, but I think we need to work again at the diversity of the plantings and include some wherever green species. I don't think that was done because these verbal comments that we got didn't make the cut in the last revision. So I'm going to take another look at the landscape plan and make sure that it has the diversity in it as it was asked at the last meeting. The curbing on both sides of the roadway, the board had asked at the last meeting that I entertain sloped granite on the north side of the road. And I think Beth had mentioned vertical granite on the south side. We can go in that direction if the board prefers. That also didn't make the cut. We just didn't have time in the last several days. Also, we're dealing with vacations. Uh, streetlights, we're going to add those in the next several days. And I think that's it. Those are the items that should be in the plans that aren't but will be shortly.
Okay.
That's, that's the latest.
Great. So why don't we go over the differences in the plans that you have presented to, that you sent us?
Sure. Um, yeah. Let me just go down the list from the written, the written comments that I got from the engineering department. Uh, the first comment was regarding the roadway grade, where Beth had asked, had asked that we keep it, what did she say, ten percent of every effort be made to meet the maximum grade requirement, which is eight percent for not more than three hundred feet. Um, we can't do that because of the topography of the land. So that's, we can go through that. One of the suggestions Brian had made when we got the VHB comments was that at some point, maybe soon, we would try to meet directly with Beth and VHB to kind of arm wrestle these different engineering topics.
Yeah, most of those things, most of the engineering details are not going to be, they're generally not worked out in, at the board level. So, yeah.
This would be another one where we could interact with VHB and talk technical terms about why we can't make an eight percent road for three hundred feet like the requirement asks. And we could illustrate why.
Okay.
So that hasn't been changed, but that was a comment and we reacted to that comment. Her second comment was in regards to front yard setbacks. And she was simply pointing out that that's not the planning board's purview, but in fact, it's the, so that's these dotted lines here, that's the zoning board. So it has nothing to do, even though it's shown on our plan, we're showing it as a courtesy really, as a mark of our intent.
Would that, and something like that would get into development agreement in terms of the promise, or I don't know, I don't know, the intentions in term, because I would imagine that Dana Ave residents would want to have some type of surety that the additional setback will at least be applied for at ZBA. Obviously, there's no way to tell how ZBA would rule, but that there would be something in, either in development agreement or, I don't, I don't really know the, the tool there. I think that's attorneys to figure out. But the point is that there should be something that, that is agreed upon.
We'd be happy to do that, make a good faith, good faith effort with zoning board to seek that relief. And it's up to them whether they want to grant it to us or not.
Yeah.
So, uh, the third comment is a reference to the flooding of lot number one.
Can we make that, can we, is that, can you zoom that to full screen?
Yeah, if you go to a view up at the top, you can go to full screen. Yeah, if you just go view, zoom full screen. Fit visible?
No, that's just not going to...
No?
How about just hitting, could you hit F-11 on the keyboard? That usually does it.
Is that what you want to do, okay?
Oh, well, actually, click on that puppy. Okay, I'm going to get rid of the sidebar.
Okay, so the third comment is in relationship to how this culvert, where is it? Right here, I think. I think it's right here. Anyways, the culvert begins somewhere in this area. And when that over tops, it works its way diagonally towards lot one.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So our plan, I think we even say this, that we're going to work closely with the town as the town works with VHB to develop a solution to the drainage issues there. Of course, we're participating financially in that effort anyways. But our plan also, I'm going to get to the drainage plan. Our plan contemplates that. And I, we discussed this at the last meeting. So when we create this proposed road where the, the grade is rising in this section here to meet the grade, mostly the existing grade of the land over here. And so this will create a dam of sorts that will prevent overland flows if the culvert, after it's been fixed by the town, decides to surcharge in a very large event. So this dam will actually protect lot one and the abutting Dana Ave neighbors by pushing the water into Highland sooner than it normally would. Because normally it runs cross country in this direction like this, sometimes continuing over lot one. But this road will stop that. This pipe that we're proposing here will catch any of those dammed waters that come and hit the road and put it into the manhole, which then puts it into the culvert underground. So we've anticipated that. It's a kind of a twofold solution on our end. We're going to work with VHB to make sure that whatever we do is in sync with what they're doing. And then this pipe is not something that anyone asked us to do, but we think it's a good idea. And I think it's responsive to the conditions that will be created in it.
So if I could just jump in, I think that, um...
Beth, could you please, yeah, I was going to, I was going to ask you to jump in a bit.
Um, so...
This is Beth Rudolph, town engineer.
Um, as you said, as Mr. Miller said, we did get some peer view comments from VHB. And I think this is one of the areas that we'll want to work with them on because I'm not sure that the, what do you say, fifteen inch pipe is sufficient to carry, I don't think there's been any...
We don't know yet.
Right, any modeling done. So there's a, there's a lot of work that needs to be coordinated between VHB and Mr. Miller to make sure that all of this makes sense. So I think, again, I think it makes sense for us to meet kind of in a more technical meeting offline to work through a lot of these issues. But I'm not sure this is going to be the final solution.
I agree with that too. We've got to wait till VHB says what they want to do and then we'll react to that and do the pipe or not do the pipe depending on what they suggest is best. So we're open to that. Uh, fourth, fourth comment is asking that we provide the auto turn simulations, which we did submit. And I can go through those if you'd like.
Super quick then, that'd be great.
I don't know if I need to do that for this, but we'll see if I can go back. So that's just a repeat of our plan for consistency's sake. And we're, we're, we're zooming in on the hammerhead area.
Okay.
And so the, the fire department has two different trucks. This is the large ladder truck. And this is the auto turn showing how it comes up, gets to here, comes this way and goes out. In order to get to this point, it has to go over the sloped granite curb. And so in talking to the fire department, they said pavers in this area would be sufficient for them. And so the curb would end where the dark line is. And then we would have a paved, you know, paver surface so they could not over the curb and make that wheel aligned turn that's shown right there. And once that happens, this turn works for the ladder truck.
Now, I note that it looks like the back end of the truck actually goes into the one home's driveway.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have to. We're showing that it does. But if it doesn't go that far, then it would, this, this wheel line right here, instead of being where it is, would actually be on the paved surface.
So is the truck, which direction is the truck driving? Is it driving down?
It's on the left-hand side going down.
Well, it can do either really. It can come in this way and go this way and go down, or it can come, start here and work its way up and come back and go down. So it's, it's a duel.
It's not that.
Yeah, well, it looks like...
Why don't we hold on for comments from the, from the audience? As soon as Mr. Miller's done, we'll have a chance. So just hold on to your thoughts, please.
And just, so yeah, at least based, based on this, the arrows are going this way. So this is showing a turn in here, then back, and then going over the curb there. But is it the other truck that can go that way? Because this doesn't, this, this doesn't say that it can go to the... Well, it works both ways. You can start your truck on this side and come this way and go there first and come back and go out. Or you can start on the left side of the road and come into...
Excuse me, can we, excuse me, members of the audience, please hold your comments until we give you, until Mr. Miller's done. Thank you.
And frankly, you don't have to take my word for it. This is something that VHB will review and say yay or nay whether I'm telling you the truth or not. I mean, I am, but this is...
So at this point, this is not, we, we took all that kind of stuff out of the scope at, to reduce the fee as Mr. Miller's request. So this is not something that is in VHB's review if we want to ask them to review this plan.
What, what would be the increase in...
Would imagine it would be fairly minor, but it's not currently in their scope to review this traffic sort of issue.
Okay, so if we want to have this reviewed, that's something we would have to ask VHB to do. Okay.
And we can sit down with Beth as well, or Brian and both, and show how the, the turns work on the screen. It's, it's hard on, with a static sketch to say that's the final result. Because the way you get to the sketch is a lot of trial and error with, with the program to show that.
I, um, I just had a quick question in terms of why, I mean, it's, it's, the, the hammerhead's tight. And it's obviously this turn that's the most problematic in any direction. Um, why, why does this, why does this curve, like, why does, either this house need to be right upon this to create this situation?
Right, it seems like we could extend the hammerhead and, and change that turning radius to make it eas, so I mean, my concern has always been that on the southern side of that road is a guardrail and a slope. So there's no room for error for that truck if they come in, well, either way, to, to make that turn coming out. Um, so, I mean, you show one of your turning movements actually going over that guardrail.
No, that's the overhang on the truck.
No, at the corner, at the bend.
Yeah, sure. That's the point.
Right here.
That's the overhang.
But it's at least kissing, where's it?
But it's over the guardrail.
It's over the border.
Everything has to be contained. It's one thing if it overhangs, you know, a curve on somebody's property, but this is a guard, this is a guardrail with a three to one or two to one slope. Again, I, we just got this in Chilwell yesterday, so this is really the first time looking at it. I think, I would all be a little more comfortable if things were stretched out a little and maybe this corner was not so severe.
Even a little, even a little bit.
So I can, so I can do that. What I'm, what I'm trying to balance is the disruption to the land. So I can, I can make this as big as you want. The problem is it takes down more trees and has a bigger impact.
Well, if you, if you push this back a little further, you're just eating into this area. You're not eating into any area where you're not already...
Vegetated, yeah.
It seems like you're creating a bad, a worse situation where maybe ten feet, I mean, and, I mean, the neighbors, this, this house is pretty far away from all, all the neighbors, I would imagine. If you could, I guess if you could zoom, yeah, zoom over.
I like it.
So compared to the other house, maybe, maybe this one is actually a little bit further. But I mean, this is over fif, over six, sixty feet away from this house, um, at least. This one, I guess is, this part of the house is thirty. You can barely see what that's thirty. So that is already really close.
It shifted not back, but over.
I mean, this neighbor, like I said, it's fifty, sixty feet away. Everyone else is thirty or, or less. It seems like five or six feet even to be able to make the turning rate, make it happen.
Sure. I, I, I mean, like I said, I'll, if that's what it takes, I'll, I'll move this house and we'll extend the hammerhead another five feet. I was just trying to avoid pushing the homes closer to the neighbors.
Well, I think you can push it...
This way.
This way and not towards Dana Ave.
Push it to the east, then to the north.
And if, and if you want, I can, I can shave off more on the curve and give that to the roadway.
Well, I, I, I would feel really comfortable if engineering took a hard look at this and figure out, you know, since you folks have just got this, if you could take a hard look and come up with some recommendations.
Fire department has already approved it.
All right, well, I guess we'll firstly start with the fire department and then go from there.
We've gone over it with Captain Tustin and...
I, I, I understand how important it is for the fire department to approve it. I am concerned about how close it is to that...
Guardrail.
Guardrail, to be honest.
And this is with the twenty foot road width. So when you shrink that down to eighteen, it's going to be an even more difficult turning movement.
Oh, yeah, actually, that is, so, yeah, what was the, was this based on the twenty or the eighteen?
That's the twenty.
So it doesn't...
So then, yeah.
So, yeah, we, this essentially, we have to go back to, we have to go back to step zero on this one.
We'll do that. And we'll jake the road and we'll come back and talk to you about it again.
I mean, I think the, the goal is so that no part of the truck is ever overhanging on any part of the southern section. It's one thing on the...
The truck can overhang the curb. That's completely fine. It's whether the truck is hitting the guardrail and that, and you're correct on that. We don't want to hit the guardrail.
Yeah, and...
So that's, that's a...
One, one of also my concerns, and this is because of my ignorance of fire trucks, is how nimble they are going in one direction versus another direction. So...
Independent, you have a steering wheel in the back and a steering wheel.
I understand, but do they follow the exact same track on the ground?
I don't think this truck has a, has a back.
It doesn't?
So, so my concern is that this shows one direction of travel, but it may be impossible for the truck to go in the opposite direction, in the oppo, oh, that's not coherent, is it? If the fire truck came in, so you're showing the truck going like this, which is, we'll just call that possible. If I take the truck and I move it over here, it may not be able to turn the same amount going forwards as backwards going around that turn. And so when I'm not, I don't know, I mean, you've stated that it can make it, but until we see both tracks indicating that it could go in either direction...
I don't think it can go the second direction you're talking about because it's going to...
It doesn't look like it.
It can't even make that left.
It's too sharp.
Right, so I just want to be clear that if, if, if the, we, we have to make sure that if it can only go one way, it can make it. If it's going to be able to, if, if the option of going the other way is presented, then it has to be possible in both directions. And right now, this is just showing us one possibility.
Then I, I understand what you're saying. The limitation to this document that I submitted is that it takes all of the effort out of, you know, you don't get a chance to see all the trials and errors that we went through to produce the sketch that we thought was the worst case. So when you see all that, and maybe we sit down with Beth and Brian and, and show the program and play with it a little so that we can illustrate that this is in fact the worst case, then you have a better comfort level with the static sketch that we end up showing. It's just the nature of the business.
Well, I think, at the end of the day, we need the worst case to work. And I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah.
That's fine. We're going to work on it.
Yeah, okay.
So why don't we just not go through the rest because we've got to work on it? Keith's got to get it.
Well, when you say through the rest, what, the rest...
Those are the other trucks.
Five other simulations.
Oh, there's five, yeah. Well, I think the key point that Beth pointed out is this is for a twenty foot roadway.
That's my point, so.
Yeah, why don't we just...
Why keep going and, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's...
Scratch this for now. All right, so let's look.
And again, I think if it works for the biggest truck, then it, that's really all we need for the analysis.
And would hope.
Yeah, so let me finish going through...
Unless there's, the bed turns different, which is possible.
Right.
So let me finish going through the comments from Beth's office first. I'm halfway through and then I'll get to the trees and any other, any ones.
And after you're done, I'd like to have Beth comment on your responses to the engineering department.
Yeah. Uh, item five was provide a detail for the handicap ramp, ADA ramp at Highland. And we didn't have this in before, but now we show a ramp on either side of the proposed road. Uh, item six was we needed to pick a name, so I picked a name for the proposed road.
And it is?
Uh, Abbey Road.
Abbey Road.
I don't think that's taken yet.
I think so.
I have no idea where you asked to find out about that.
Right.
I don't believe that. I don't believe there's another Abbey Road either.
Great. Uh, so item seven, uh, existing conditions plan needs to be stamped by a land surveyor. We got that to happen. How do I show you that? Right, so there's.
Okay.
That's a stamp, Brian Knowles. Okay, item eight, uh, three or four items about labels, labeling the easements. So, uh, this involves, uh, different easements that, uh, will be needed to construct the drainage chambers here and here.
Well, those are permanent easements, correct? Not just temporary.
Right, right. Right, so these are, I'm, I'm referring to all the easements because items A and B and C all relate to the easements.
So, because I'm ignorant of these things, so these easements allow the association to go in and make, to maintain these, okay.
Correct, yeah. There's also an easement for the water loop here that would go out to north border. Uh, we wouldn't control this, so the town has to also provide an easement on the land swap area. For that to work, I'm sure they will.
So that would need to be on the A and R. Or should it be on the A and R, I think? Might be a separate article.
Right, a separate article. Oh, yes, because it's not a rezon.
So the other comment was that the area of each easement needed to be labeled, how much of the easement was in lot one versus lot two, so that's shown here. Okay, so sheet C one, this item nine, let's see, uh, was a comment about how much we had previously shown as being cleared and grubbed. That's this plan. And even this plan, I noticed after we changed it. So the previous plan had this hatch, cross hatching on the entire parcel, which is ridiculous. Obviously, we're not gonna clear and grub the whole parcel. Clearing and grubbing is the process of removing vegetation to construct something new, so we're not doing that. And even as I look at this, I don't think clearing and grubbing needs to be way out here. It needs to be tight with the right of way. And I don't know off the top of my head if this line is the roadway or the right of way. I assume that's the right of way itself.
Looks big.
That we're proposing is big. So to me, the clearing and grubbing needs to be right at the right of way because the road itself is actually smaller than the right of way. So we shouldn't need to clear and grub outside of the right of way unless in fact.
I think you'll need it to, to get to grade.
Yeah, in order to grade it off, in some cases we might.
Sorry, did you finish the easement? There is, or, okay, so were there any?
I have this vague recollection of, of an easement potentially that you would need in order to do the grading of what.
Yeah, so that, this clearing and grubbing is outside of your, um, property. So you'll need a temporary easement on town property to do that.
Right, and, and we've had a chance over the last eight hours or so about the plan, I think. Yes. I haven't submitted this yet, but I'm gonna just bring it up for conversation purposes because I think it's valuable. We'll, of course, submit this when we're, when we have it finally figured out, but what, what we think we can do is not do the grading in here. Let me go to the plan that shows the grading. So see all this dark lines? This is proposed regrading on the side slope that is adjacent to the proposed road, and that is town property. When we submitted this plan, in order to meet, so it's a give and take here a little bit, in order to meet the slope that we're proposing for the roadway, which exceeds the eight percent, we had to regrade all the way down here in order to make that cut and fill work so that we could lessen the slope. Now what we're proposing with this plan is an eleven and a half percent slope, but no touching of the trees that are anchoring.
Eleven and a half percent slope on the road?
Right.
I used, what, didn't it need to be ten? That's a significant increase.
Yeah, I mean, I think the town would be more amenable to you getting a temporary easement on town property than to building eleven and a half percent road.
Next week when we meet, we should go look because the land here is very well armored and anchored by the trees that are in the side slope. And it takes a long time for that to happen. And so it would be better in the long term that we not disturb that at all and let that acreage stay there. And in fact, enhance it where we can.
I would not recommend an eleven and a half percent road.
I understand, but we, we can do it with far less disruption on the town property and, and nothing, so we have.
Right, so, but I mean, that's a short-term impact. Eleven and a half percent road is, uh, permanent.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I understand.
Once you build it, we're not gonna change the slope of the road, whereas.
Eleven and a half is not a huge change from the ten.
But it's a big change from eight.
No, I understand, but this is, this is ten right there and it has a big impact, so.
There's, right, okay, so this is a trade-off, um, that I think the town will have to discuss as to what we think is, is acceptable.
I agree.
So the key is, it's eleven and a half with no work, well, essentially no destruction of the side.
Or minimal, I wouldn't, I mean.
Yeah, so minimal destruct, dis.
Minimal impact.
And I think it would make sense to go out and look at it together because when you see it in person, you, you get a sense for what value I think those trees have to that side slope.
Okay, um, and I just.
I don't disagree with you that it's certainly difficult, will be difficult to re-vegetate a slope this steep, but I think it's necessary for a road that's not as steep. Uh, personally, as I've said, I'd like to see the road go below ten percent.
Is there an example of a ten percent road?
Yeah, we've looked at that in the past. I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head, but if you look at, um, like Bellevue, I think is one of the steeper ones. I can, we've done that analysis in the past.
I have an action item to come up with a ten percent road.
Yeah, there's a few.
And do we have anything greater than ten?
I think there might be a couple, not the whole road, but like a few little sections.
Let's find that out. And I, I do wanna concentrate on the time here because somehow we've already gobbled up a half hour. So what, let's, let's move on and so we get some chance for the audience to participate.
Driveway openings, item ten, driveway openings should conform to zoning requirements. We made that change. They are the, the same as the town requires. The timber ten B, uh, we proposed a timber guardrail along the side of the road on the south side. Uh, there is no mass DOT standard for timber. There used to be. And so what we fell back on was U.S. Department of Transportation, National Park Service, the timber guardrail. Same safety, same strength. We just like the look of the wood as opposed to that metal steel thriving, is what they call it.
So what you wanna, wanna look at is the Amistick Valley Parkway where the town did the channel widening, that wood guardrail along there is the DCR standard, so I think that might be an acceptable alternative.
Okay, so the town feels that the DCR standard is sufficient.
Yeah, I mean, something similar to what we put in along project two would be acceptable.
That works for me. I just don't like the steel.
Agreed.
Okay, so, so additional test bit data we on the plans have updated. Right, uh, let's see.
I, I apologize. Um, I meant to ask a question about your, your, your clearing diagram.
Okay.
Since you just slipped back. Could you go back to it? It was just there. I just, I don't, I'm trying to understand, is this looks, is this the same here? Is this also a place that we get cleared?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I'm proposing to do that as, when the houses get built, uh, because these chambers, these are two chambers.
Right, right.
Specifically for the roof drainage of these two houses.
Right, right. I just, for some reason, it, the pattern looked different to my eye and I wanted to make sure that it was the same.
Yeah, it's the same.
So I think we just need to clarify so that everybody understands is this clearing and grubbing plan is for the road construction and the drainage construction. But there will be additional clearing and grubbing, I would imagine, necessary to build those houses. I mean, you're not showing any clearing and grubbing where the houses will be shown, so I think you're gonna be closer to the original plan once you build everything out, which is the full clearing and grubbing of the site, but I, I think what you're showing is just what you intend to clear and grub for the road construction.
Stick to what the board's review is for, uh, just like with the setbacks, that's not planning board, it's zoning.
Okay.
The, the building department would be the one who, I think oversees the homes. Uh, we wouldn't be coming back for building department to cur-, to construct a home and take trees down.
I just think it's important for everybody, the board and the residents understands what we're looking at here, because it's not, it's not the full project construction. This is just what he's showing for the road and the utility construction. That's right.
I can show anything that you want here. I'm finding the way, it is what it is.
Well, I, I, the, I think Beth's point is important because I, I understood this to be the final, this is all that would impact the land. And Beth's pointing out that this is just the minimum that will happen, essentially.
That's what I was trying for because the comment I got was, when I covered the entire site with clearing and grubbing, people said, oh, that's not it either. So I'm, I'm reacting to that comment.
So I, I think what we're probably looking for somewhere in the middle is if there's areas where you think that you can absolutely preserve them during road construction and house construction, like if there's a strip, if there's a strip, um, you know, along the back of the Dana properties, that type of thing. So maybe we're looking for the opposite plan, which is not the areas you're gonna clear and grub, but the areas you're gonna save. And if there's any trees in this area that you wanna preserve. Does that make more sense to people?
Yeah, so.
That would be good, exactly.
Yeah.
Which is very important.
Okay, so.
Okay, we'll prepare that. Borings, right. So as we mentioned in our narrative that we submitted with the original documents, we had McPhail Associates go out and do borings. And it doesn't, uh, they're not reflected here.
B one A, is that one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, they are, you're right, yeah. So these circles are borings. There should be another one, yeah, B three. We did four.
They're two right next to each other.
Right, 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 yeah, because there's a chamber at that end of the hammerhead. Here's the, right, that's the shape of the hammerhead right there. So there's a chamber here, there's a chamber here, drainage chamber, there's a drainage chamber here. And so we did borings, and I'm just waiting for McPhail to submit their boring report and characterize the soil, and that will synchronize up with our uh, stormwater report that, uh, picks an infiltration value for the soils. We, we reconciled it between the borings and the test bits.
So in the interest of time, do you have, how, how much more do you think you?
Uh, let's see.
Because we are now, we only have, uh, oh, good lord, nine, oh, it's only eight forty.
We got twenty minutes.
We got, yeah, but we need time for the audience as well, so.
Okay.
If it helps, I don't really have any comments because I haven't looked at anything yet, so.
Well, then, then.
We will want that to, we will want that to happen, Beth.
Expect your input.
We just got it, the plans yesterday, so.
Okay, well, then let's, we'll, we, thank you.
Yes, you may have time to, to, to review that, please.
What, you're human?
I've been in meetings for two days.
Imagine that.
I mean, uh, if there's anything.
What I'm doing is I'm going through the comments because some of them are really, um, simple and minor and things that she could, once she reviews it, say, yep, he's fine there. Other ones, you know, we might make more best use of our time if we wait till she reviews, maybe at the next meeting. She can say what she has exception instead of me going checking.
I think, yeah, I was, I, I guess I was under the impression that engineering had more time to review it, so.
Well, let's just do that. That way she can tell us what she doesn't like about what we've done and we can react to that.
Is, is, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That'll be the end of my presentation.
Okay, well, then why don't, uh, thank you for that?
Oh, the tree plan, I'm sorry.
The tree plan, yeah, the tree plan's important, so why don't we do the tree plan?
I like, I like the trees, as you know.
So twelve-inch and di-, and, and larger at breast height, which is where you're supposed to measure them, uh, five, three, four, five.
In the entire lot?
In, in, in this roadway area.
The roadway.
Roadway, also roadway and drainage chamber.
Right, we were, we were also concerned about the rest of the property.
Now that I understand that now.
Yeah, we are, we are really concerned.
It's the overall, it's the overall impact.
All right, so we'll, as of, because of what you said to me earlier tonight, I'll go and look at the home footprints as well.
And I think it's not just the home footprints. I think it's also trees that will be impacted by grading. So if you're going to, you know, fill three feet or cut three feet in these areas, you need to make sure that you understand what trees will be impacted by that.
Really wanna see the ones that are remaining after you're done with all the work. That's what we wanna see.
Well, no, we want, we also wanna see what's being removed.
Exactly.
Yes, we wanna see.
So I think a plan that shows all of the three, all the trees over twelve-inch diameter.
And then ones that are marked.
What's being taken out, right, I mean, color code somehow, maybe.
All right, so all twelve-inch diameter trees, throughout. Okay, we'll get that too.
Okay. Does the board have any quick questions before we open it up for, um, audience participation? Guess not. Why don't we open it up? And, um, if you could come forward.
So we can hear you, so the rest of the world can hear you too.
And, and Beth, if, if you're not.
I can.
Yeah.
Head back to the audience.
Happily.
I have just three quick questions.
Please, please, sit down, um, identify yourself.
I'm Deborah Legitacy. I live at thirty North Border Road.
Liz, did you get that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can cars park on that new road?
Uh, no, I don't, that, that, yeah, that, I don't know, but it was, it was not the intention that we would have.
On the proposed road?
Yeah, it's nine, it's, yeah, nine, if it's nine feet, nine, essentially nine-foot lanes, eighteen feet.
So, but, so people going into the fells cannot park on there? There'll be no parking?
Not at eighteen feet, there, there's zero chance. At eighteen feet, there is zero chance that we would allow parking on that road.
Uh, my second question, I guess, may have been answered that Mr. Miller has no idea of how much green he'll be destroying at this point. It is going to be presented to you at another time.
Well, that's what that, that scrubbing and, yeah.
So we don't know how much is gonna be destroyed.
It's clearly going to be a very large portion of that lot. It showed, it showed more than fifty, sixty percent just for the road and then whatever else might be for the associated development.
So pretty much most of it. And does it matter what the neighbors?
Well, we certainly wanna hear your input.
Does it matter?
Certainly it does matter.
We wouldn't be here, to be, to be very clear, we, we would not be here at all if we didn't at least listen to the neighbors.
Yeah.
And, and, and rest assured, it is important. Doesn't feel that way. Thank you.
I just.
Well, what is your opinion?
What was it? Can, can I make one point as well in terms of access to the fells? The hammerhead is abutting all private property, so anyone trying to use this road to get to the fells would actually have to go through people's
Yards.
House lots. So there's no direct access to the fells off of the Hammerhead Road. So I don't know if that's, makes you feel better or not? Would you please come forward?
Hi, I'm Ann Sarah.
Could you please?
I'm Ann Sarah. Hi, I'm Ann Sarah, five Andrea Circle. One of the things I want to make sure is that there are three foot of, uh, access between the, um, proposed infiltration units and groundwater. So that mass, uh, mass D P standard is two feet of.
I want three.
And that's what I'm asking for. Also, I want all of the units to be raised at least one foot above, um, the B F E. I don't think it's a problem in this case.
Could you, could you please explain what B F E is?
It's a, it's the, the, i- it's a, uh. The base flood elevation. Yeah, I, I don't think it's a problem here, but I do want it to be that.
I'm sorry, could you just say it again, raise all the house units?
Yeah, I don't think it's really a problem here.
What's the number?
This, this site is not in a mass flood. Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem here.
Sorry, okay.
Yeah. But it isn't a problem in a lot of your other properties. That's why I mentioned.
Well, why don't we, excuse me, let's contain our comments to this development, please, because we have limited time tonight.
So I also, um, noticed that you, uh, were looking at this unit as if it was just going to be built, just going to be built. And I wonder why.
We are looking at these units because there is a subdivision proposal that will come before us. And that is our duty as a planning board to.
But you're looking at it from a guy who actually perjured himself.
Excuse me, we are looking at it from the responsibility of this board to evaluate proposals that come before us.
From a guy who perjured himself on the application.
I'm sorry, that's our responsibility as a board to anyone who comes before this board and wants to show us plans, that's our duty.
So apparently, I can perjure myself and come before you and build something.
I, excuse me, you are, you are making. I, excuse me, you are, you are making allegations about someone else before this board with.
Oh, it's clear he perjured himself, that's clear.
Excuse me, Ms. Sarah, we deal with factual statements at this table. No, I'm sorry, that's not part of this discussion.
It's fact.
This discussion is about the plans brought before this board. It is outside of the purview of this board to determine the character of the people at this table.
That's what I'm actually asking you to do.
We, our purview is to look at the plans before us.
I'm asking you to look at the character of the people before you.
It is not.
This man has perjured himself.
Excuse me, Ms. Sarah, this is not the forum to bring up allegations of perjury.
Where is that forum?
If it's something that you believe he has done in his foreign statements, then you bring it up with the A G's office, you can bring it up with town council. Unfortunately, this board is not a legal board. We do not have the authority.
But you're doing business with a perjurer.
We are not doing business with.
Doing business with a perjurer.
We are doing business with an applicant.
Can I address that?
No.
No. No, no, I'm sorry, no, Mr. Miller, I'm sorry.
We should move on to the.
We, by default, do not respond to allegations like this. If you wish, no. I have, I have repeatedly told Ms. Sarah, this is not the forum for that, and I'm going to, any person sitting at this table does not get that forum. If you have a desire to do so, then you can please speak to the newspaper, speak to someone else, but nobody at this table is going to go into that while I'm chair.
She's wrong.
I, that's fine, we're going to move on to another, or else I will just shut this hearing down. It's not a hearing. I will cut off microphones.
Will you let her speak?
Exactly.
I, I have already.
Public forum, and she just slandered me for five minutes, and you're not going to let me say anything?
I didn't, I. I said that the allegations were unproven, that there were no facts behind them. And that's as far as it's going to go. Because if we open up this board to he said, she said, or he said, he said, things about allegations, we'll be here all night. And that is not the purpose of this board. I've seen it happen to this board before, and while I'm chair, I am not going to allow that because it gets very personal, and I'm sorry, but that's it. And I don't, I don't mean this in disrespect, I mean this to maintain the decorum of this meeting. So if there is nothing else, any other pertinent comments, please, sir?
I am Joe Susi and live at five Dana Ave. And if we could move this down, I want to see where the.
Right there. Susi.
Okay, I'm looking at, I was looking at another, oh, right here, okay. Can I get up here?
Of course.
So I've submitted, Mr. Miller, I've submitted, Brian, the.
The survey plan?
Survey plan.
Just want to make, make sure everybody.
The survey plan, and this stone wall, okay, has been in there since day one. When you go back and look at the benchmark, when this survey was performed, it was performed at the, at the telephone pole. The benchmark is four and a half feet to five feet beyond the telephone pole. And where the, the marks were, are the stakes that were put in there at the time, it was off by that four and a half to five feet. This line here, and it travels all the way down to the Good Ones, all the way up through to the Johnsons and Menucci, is a straight line. This was performed by Giare, I think is the name of it, and in town. He's been surveying here for years and years and years.
He's our survey as well, he's our surveyor as well.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, is every time we look at this, it drives my wife crazy because none of this has ever been, been adjusted. And, and I did provide you, two, two and a half years ago, a copy of that in an email, which I then forwarded a copy to.
All right, send it to me again, send it to me again.
I, I, I'm not going to send it again. You're going to do your survey, you're going to do your due diligence, which you should do, but I'm telling you, this rock wall, the line is, is, from the rock wall is about five, maybe four and a half feet away from that, the line. You had a stake at four and a half feet from, you know, from, from my line for the house lot, which is supposed to be fifteen feet away, or ten feet, whatever it is, but it sure is not four and a half feet to the property. But this thing still shows this, this stone wall. From as long as we've been here, and I, all I want to do is have somebody go in there and provide, you know, a certification of this. I get the certs, I give copies to both Brian and Mr. Miller, and I, I think we need to do that, because all of this stuff here.
Is contingent.
Is all contingent, this whole line here, if everything is off four and a half feet.
Do you have stakes, do you have private corner?
Yes, yes, that were provided there, yep, they did.
By Giare?
Yes.
And they show it going south of the wall?
Yeah, yeah, if that's obvious.
Yeah.
All of our houses, that was what they provided at the time.
We're going to be talking with Giare, so.
To Highland Avenue, all the way up to Menucci's, and over to Mike Bacalli's place. We, we, all of this was surveyed.
Yeah, well, if you give me the survey, we'll look at it again, and we'll.
Well, I'm a little confused.
The survey's been submitted to the.
The only thing I can.
I have a copy of it.
We have. Also, we're.
I just, you know, this could have a significant impact.
It would, look, we're, I, I hate to say when people say we're on top of it, because, right, the only thing I can tell you is that we have hired Giare to do our portion of this that had, that shows the, the two, the two pieces of land that we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Clearly, he's going to have that survey plan, and we can sit down and talk with him. So it's, it's, we don't have to find him, we will talk with him because we're involved with, in business with him.
And in the meantime, Mr. Miller should have his surveyor look at the discrepancy and.
Figure that out.
Yep, we'll start on it right away. Two, two and a half years ago, what's a different project? This is not this project.
Well, yeah, but the lot lines haven't changed.
Let's, 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 okay, so this board, this board will ensure that your, that, that the plan that you've submitted is reviewed as part of this whole thing.
It's not an issue.
Hold on one second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, before, are you, are you finished, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up because we keep seeing this.
Right, no.
Every, every single.
I, I, right, I mean, I think, we don't have the final survey of this land yet, is that correct?
Correct.
And until we get that final survey, I would, I would.
Corrections we made, we'll correct it.
When the final, excuse me.
I think it makes sense to have whatever material he has.
Yes.
That's what I asked for, right.
So, so.
We'll have the final survey.
Right, so.
Copies, I sent it to Brian, I sent it to Mr. Miller.
Let me, let me make a compromise here, Brian, could you send a copy to Mr. Miller to make sure he has it?
Sure.
Okay, so that way you don't have to do anything anymore. Be assured that we are, we will make sure that the lot lines are correct, and Brian.
I'm writing a note now.
He's writing a note right now.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. Ms. Sarah, you've spoken already, I just want to make sure that there's no one else who wants to say something? Nobody? Because you have.
Two seconds, please.
I, I want to make sure, Ms. Sarah, that you are directing your comments to the plan. If it has nothing to do with the plan, then I'm afraid you won't be able to speak. Would you please come forward and speak to the mic?
You didn't hear her yelling.
She swore a few minutes ago.
I'm, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'll have to go, I didn't hear it, I was listening, but.
Very inappropriate.
If, if.
You don't want me to speak?
If you were, if you were.
Everyone heard what you said from the back of the room, it's not appropriate at a public meeting.
So if you have comments, you can submit them to the planning board. We do listen to all of the comments, but we really appreciate comments that are to the point and based on factual stuff, because that's all we can rule on are the facts. So if you have facts you'd like us to know, send them to us. It's planningboard@winchester.us. Send them to them, and we will review them. And, and I'm going to, we're an elected board. If you find that we are behaving inappropriately, I'm up for election next year. Thank you. And if, if the board, I think we can, we can, again, this is not the final hearing on this, this is actually.
There will be more.
We will have several more on this, and then we're going to have a hearing on the zoning article, because this has to, we have to rezone this land, so there'll be a public hearing on the zoning article. So this is not the last bite at this apple. So, and I think, why don't we move on to our next item? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I need a break.
Okay, so why don't we take a short.
Three minutes.
Why don't we just have a five-minute break, we'll, we'll come back at nine oh five. I have no idea how many hour minutes that is.
We're fine, it's nine, it's nine o'clock.
Okay. Okay, welcome back Winchester. We hope you had a great five minutes away from the planning board. Uh, and you were refreshed, or whatever you do while you're not listening to us. So our next, uh, our next order of business after that exciting discussion on ONA Dev is to talk about petitions before us that have been submitted to the ZBA. Now, we are an advisory committee on these, except for the A and R at the end, but we'll get to that. So first, I'm gonna turn this over to Brian.
I'm, I'm gonna get that.
And, hi, are you here for-
Fifty-two Water Street.
Okay, so we are not there yet, but if you take a seat-
We'll be there, we'll be there in a few minutes.
Very shortly. Okay, so, um- Myrtle.
Are you refreshing my memory here?
Myrtle, Myrtle is the name of the ghost computer, isn't it?
Turtle?
Turtle Myrtle?
Turtle the turtle.
Myrtle the turtle.
I think it's Yertle the turtle.
Noyan Myrtle.
Noyan Myrtle, okay, good.
Uh, okay. So, we're starting with fifty-two Myrtle?
We are starting at fifty-two Myrtle.
Okay.
I am, I am looking at the wrong one.
Sorry, let me just get here. Okay. Let's just get the site plan up. Okay. Fifty-two Myrtle Street. So, petitioner seeking a special permit under three-five-five. So it's to be permitted to construct an addition that will be located closer to the front property line than permitted as of right. Properties located in the RDB and contains just over ten thousand square feet. So, according to Macris, there are no records of fifty-two Myrtle Street on anything, um, on Myrtle Street or anything on Greeley Road. The project entails the demolition of a shed and this brick driveway. So remove shed and this brick driveway. In order to build a one-story garage, twenty-five by twenty-five with a deck, um, a roof deck on, on top of that. No setbacks are further encroached as a result of the proposed project. It's a modest addition with little to no change to the impervious percentage on the lot. Uh, Beth and Brian already gave, in engineering gave their, there was no comments because there was, there was, it was a net zero change because of the pervious pavement. The, I'm sorry, the impervious pavement that's already there. Um, I saw no potential adverse impacts on the neighborhood, um, as foreseen for this project. And due to the location and relatively small scale of the addition, and that no new setbacks are being encroached upon, I recommended favorable action with regards to this petition.
Can you pop up street view again? One of the things I really would like to see is the impact on the neighbor. And I don't know how close the neighbor is to-
Sure.
I've tried to do it and you can't go down that side.
It's private, it's a private way.
Uh, well, maybe, yeah, unfortunately I did not have the presence of mind to go and look at Google Maps myself. Maybe there's a, maybe there's a satellite view that'll get us. It'll probably show us lots of trees.
It's Myrtle Terrace.
Uh, no, it's Myrtle Street, isn't it?
That's Myrtle Terrace, I thought.
It's Myrtle Street on, it's Myrtle Terrace, yes.
Whoops.
It's Myrtle Terrace.
Sorry, that was a-
That's a really nice house there.
Yeah, that's a nice difference.
Seventy-nine Myrtle.
That's a nice house.
Yeah, so, um, Brian, if you could make a note when you send it off to the ZBA that you changed street to Terrace.
Sure. Yeah, oh, no, you can get there.
Oh, mine did that.
Oh, wow, there they are.
Whoa.
I mean, I couldn't go down that path.
That can't-
That looks-
That doesn't seem right.
That is it.
It says forty-five.
Uh, it's forty-two because that's with that road. See how that Google Maps is saying that's that road?
Mm-hmm. I mean, I'm just trying to get the address here.
Yeah. Um, wow, that is the narrowest of roads.
Well, a lot, most, a lot of that part of town was really built out, you know, long before we had, uh, the zoning code.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
So, yeah, this makes sense, okay, so this is, this is, this is it.
It's like tucked behind there.
And it's lovely.
Yeah, see, my, my main concern with this is how it changes the aspect on, uh, that, the neighbor, on Greeley Road.
Which is that path.
Yes, which is the, 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 the wagon trail?
Yeah.
Practically, because then that goes down, down the, down the south border.
Yeah, um-
So, yeah, you can't really-
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't really-
I mean, what, so here, maybe, no, no.
Oh, there we go.
So, it's this shed that's being torn down.
Okay.
Um, that shed is this shed, so it's gonna be between here and the house. So it's basically just right here. It's getting tucked back in there, but it's still, again, one story. Um, but, yeah, on the roof, obviously, they would see, so on that roof or that, uh, garage roof deck, you would, they would be able to see the backyard, meaning from the deck.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit over, but it's still a one, it's one story.
Can you go further down Greeley and, and see where the neighboring house is? Nope, the other way.
There you go.
Yep, keep going, keep going, keep going.
Keep going.
Yeah, I wanna see the actual Butters.
Oh, this house, you wanna see this house? Oh.
They're not really-
Yeah, no, I didn't think they were impacted at all.
Well, I didn't know.
No, I saw, I thought you were talking about this, I think, so I think from-
That seems to have been a rea- a reas- a reasonable conclusion.
Yeah, well, I think from here, that, that at this level, you could, they would be looking down on, on this, but it is still just a one story and I would imagine they would want buffer on there as well.
Oh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really-
Turned around?
No, I'm an, I'm an idiot. I didn't even notice that on there. Okay, yes. That was a reasonable assumption to ma- that you made.
Okay.
That's the old house I was talking about, so. Okay, yeah, so-
So, yeah, it's the, the area of developments between the, the, the far side of this shed and, and this, and this house here.
Is that the shed that's being removed?
Yes.
That's the, sure, the, the one that's coming down.
So that's this shed here, remove shed.
Well, I mean, it, it certainly doesn't make the lot any more non-conforming.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, and it seems reasonable. Um, I would like it to be set back further, just because I'm concerned about the impact on the road. Um, I don't know.
It'd be, it'd be clearly not standard road already.
Yeah, yeah, so my only, my only, um, concern would be to move the garage back further. And that, of course, is at the expense of their backyard. So, I just- Okay, that was my comment, I'm sorry. Usually we go around the circle here.
But you started.
Um, I follow the fine.
You don't?
Okay, so, um, is there a motion on the, on the table?
Um, move that we recommend favorable action to zoning board appeals.
Okay, is there a second? You have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Yay, okay.
Um, why don't you start the A and R, I'm gonna go get the A and R downstairs.
Okay.
Decide.
We, we, we can do Water Street.
Oh, I forgot Water Street, oh, let's, let's definitely do that first.
Let's do Water Street.
Okay.
Since we have a person.
Can I come here?
Please.
Please, please.
So I have your plans.
Have a seat.
Have a seat.
And you can speak right into the mic so everybody can hear what you have to say.
Sure.
So, I have your new plans and your old plans.
Sure.
And when I say old, I mean the original petition. Um, if you wanted to, I don't know, walk us through anything or say anything or-
That's a new one?
These are the new ones that you had, the most recent ones that you had sent to me.
Okay, so, just-
For, for your start, could you please identify yourself?
Yeah, my name is Heba Abu. And my official name is Hebala Abu Muhammad, but I go with Heba Abu. And, um, simply, um, we need more space for our, uh, house. It's small and I was blessed with twins, uh, on December two thousand seventeen. So, we definitely need a space. Uh, our house is small and tiny and the parking, and also the lot size is tiny as well.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why we want to go by, uh, additional, uh, half floor. Um, and we have been just applying for the, for that and we have been in the process since, I think, um, April.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. So I can show you the last version after some adjustment and some, uh, changes. Um. So that's the house, it's up front.
So-
There's a side, uh, which looks to the, our neighbor, which they also provided some letter that they agree about our, uh, project. Uh, so we have all the support from everyone around us.
It's always helpful.
And we had one of, yeah, some of our neighbor attended our, uh, meeting with, uh, committee of the board. Uh, here, uh, so-
Could I ask you to zoom in so that-
Sure, I can zoom in, I am, I know, yeah.
No, just quick, Marah, quick.
Okay, just to make it full.
Sure.
So, uh, our second floor, we will just redesign the second floor to create, uh, a kids' room and another kids' room and a family room and a bathroom. And this will be the additional half floor, which will be a master room and kids' area and bathroom and walking-in closet.
Mm-hmm.
So that's simply our plan.
And the, the porch is a change, like, yeah, what's important here is to show what the changes you've made since the previous version.
Another thing we found that to just have this porch will give a nice physical feature for the house and it will give us some also, like, access to a porch. And, uh, we have this, the diameter of this porch is four feet.
Mm-hmm.
We have, uh, our, like, the boundaries between us or the, not footage, between us and our neighbor is twenty-one point one.
Mm-hmm.
And the zoning allow us to use ten feet or to keep ten feet away from our n- next neighbor. So we just are using four feet, which is less than the ten that we are allowed to use.
So let me, just to be clear, um, so it's- Four feet is measured-
From here, from the last point, so it's the radius, from the center until the last point, which is the radius.
Okay, um, is that big enough?
Uh, what do you mean about big enough?
I mean, it's four feet.
For your purposes.
For your purposes?
Uh, I would say, definitely, I would, I would love to make it bigger, but to just, uh, I would say, it would be sufficient. It would not be huge and gigantic, it would be sufficient for me. And I don't like a gigantic thing anyway, I just, like, yeah. So we just use those four feet out of the amount which is somehow applicable for us.
Because I know that my porch is very narrow. I think it's something about this deep and I wish it were like another three feet deeper.
I know, but honestly, it's sufficient for our purpose.
Okay.
So, and it also make it easier, so our neighbor are accepting that kind of, uh, changing and the footprint, uh, the zoning will, will not mind it because again it's less than, uh, the applicable one. So, uh, I can show you also the layout here for the porch, Mindy, here. And you can see this is here from the house, there is twenty-one point one. I can also zoom, uh, zoom it, zoom this a little bit for you. Yeah, so here, there is twenty-one point one from the house until the boundary with our neighbor.
Yeah.
This is here, our porch, the new porch, and here is again, this is the diameter. And from this last point of the diameter until our neighbor will be seventeen point one.
So is, is, where is the driveway on this property?
The driveway is here. It's, it's here.
Okay, so that's-
It's not, yeah, and we are not changing anything else. There's only change, uh, from our current, like, footprint.
Okay.
Okay.
I know the, the, the questions or the parts that we had, um, that we were concerned about was the, the dormers. So can you show us the new dormer design first?
Yeah, we also made some changes, uh, to make it less in size and volume. Uh, I think here.
Do you have the elevations that might be-
Yes, we also changed, did some elevation change, so here-
Ah, okay.
Right, so, yeah.
I can zoom in and make it. Uh, sure. So. So here, the dormers are less in size. We have one dormer will be, uh, big and the other, and then we created the other side to be two small dormers. Uh, so it make it somehow less in size and volume. So we made that also recommendation that you have recommended before.
Mm-hmm.
As elevation, also, we have some adjustment for the elevation to also meet your expectations. So those two points were addressed because we went actually over each single comment that you gave us and with me and the architecture, we said, okay, we will address each of those comments. So it will be, we want just, again, to, uh, to try to move on and start the work because we need the space as soon as we can.
Right, right.
Yes.
So, yeah. So I think, I don't know what else you may-
Well, if you-
Brian, do you have a copy of what our comments were? Because I wish Marah was here. I remember the conversation being a lot about the historic front elevation and the place it does the windows.
Yeah, we changed-
And the shape of the original column, like, there was a lot of others.
There was a mix, a mix of materials was one of the, what is one of the bigger comments?
So we changed that, yes, yeah, I remember that comment. It's about like how to maintain the same, like, cottage structure and-
Yes.
Yeah, we maintain that, we changed that, we get rid of the stone, we kept everything to be, uh, like, very similar to our neighborhood.
I thought there was something else about like the, you know, the historical windows, the way the windows were aligned and the sizes and shape of the windows.
Yeah, we also made some changes for the windows. You can see they are all now, uh, somehow, uh, very-
Oh.
But the front looks like huge windows, right?
Those are, those are sliding doors?
Those, yes, because this will be balcony, so they, those are sliders. And those are the, I think you call it shutter or something like that.
Oh, I see, those, the two on the outside are shutters.
Yeah, shutter, they are not windows. Those are the slide doors, just two pieces.
So what's the window on the first floor?
This one?
Yeah, what's that one?
Is that a dou- is that a shutter as well or?
Is that what?
Is that-
Go ahead.
Is that, here, let me look at it.
Hmm, I can-
The plan shows a very large window.
Is this four single panes?
Yeah.
Uh, I think so. But I can adjust it, if there's a comment that you want me to adjust, I'm fine, I'm, I'm open to-
Yes, yes, I do remember.
You know, the traditional sized windows.
Hold on, I'll get there.
Can we, can we get a, a street view of the existing, of the existing home up?
Um, yes.
Yeah, why don't we?
Oh, she, yeah, sorry.
Why don't we get a-
Street view from the-
Yeah.
That's what, yeah, we're about to do it.
We're gonna grab this for a second.
Do you want to get the, the house from Google?
Yeah, yeah.
There was also another comment about the vinyl siding. However, if you, actually, if you look at Google, you will find all our neighbors use vinyl siding. So we feel odd to use a different siding.
Well, that, I mean, traditionally, that neighborhood has always had clapboard or shingle.
I know, I know, but currently, everyone's around that, I'm talking about everyone using vinyl siding. So even we have, uh, I, I provided some pictures and, uh, I can log into my computer to show you the picture. But this actually is an old, anyway, view because just in front of us, we have a gigantic, uh, townhouse in this area.
Yes, that's-
Which using vinyl siding, this house is now, is not there, the red one.
Yes.
You can just move because-
What we, the, the enormous house on that, I live just on Canal Street on the corner of Canal. So I'm very familiar with-
So you know, you, you know this one, yeah.
I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. And I think this board doesn't look at the new additions to the neighborhood as being indicative of where we would like it to go.
Necessarily.
In terms of the size or the exteriors. Because the neighborhood is very traditionally clapboard and shingle. And as a matter of fact, just up the street from you, there's this gorgeous, um, renovation where they've just replaced the entire outside with shingles and stained it.
Which is-
It's like the brown shingles.
I know that, sixty-two Water Street, oh, it's not sixty, I'm sorry, in Water Street, there is this, like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, three family houses.
And I can tell you from experience that that's, that, that type of, uh, you know, exterior, very, very easy to maintain.
The shingle one?
Very low maintenance, very, very low maintenance.
But is it somehow also same price? Because when I talked with the contractor, he said, no, there is a big difference.
It's definitely more expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it also, I mean-
It's just about, again, budget-wise, because-
There's certainly a budget, I mean, one, one option is to use cementitious siding instead of the, um, vinyl siding and cementitious. The benefit of cementitious is that it, it's a very long-wearing siding.
I know, it's forty years. Yeah, we talked about that with the contractor, he just recommended, I'm just telling you what he said. He said about budget-wise, vinyl siding is kind of cheaper. Plus, he said, he looked around, he said, everyone said around, they're using vinyl siding. So why you have, just, he told us, just try to justify your choice by that. I'm just thinking what he said, just bring some pictures, show them the current, like, situation for the neighborhood.
It's, it's a suggestion, I mean, we're, we're an advisory board here, it's just that we're much more happy with-
More natural materials.
More natural or-
I know, but you know the, the shingle which is there is asbestos. So at least we are getting rid of the asbestos.
Well, one thing you might look at is what's underneath those shingles. So for instance, my home, which is on the corner of Canal and Rumford, it's the purple one, had, was covered with yellow asbestos shingles. When we took it off, all of the original eighteen nineties clapboard was there in almost perfect condition.
Oh, that's so good.
So you might be surprised at what you find underneath the asbestos shingle. So I completely agree with your, I mean, the one benefit of asbestos shingles is they last forever.
Yeah, forever, I know.
And their color never changes, which is a good or a bad thing.
That's why it was heavily used in the fourteen-
And as long as they're not damaged, they're not a danger, but they do fracture, but anyway, you already probably know all of this.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that.
When you take, have your contractor remove a small portion properly and see what's underneath there. You may discover wonderful, we found gingerbread boarding underneath there, we found all of the existing cedar shingles and they were in almost perfect condition after a hundred years. So, don't count out what you've got underneath there, just-
Hopefully it will be this, our story as well.
I mean, it really beautified our house finding that, so anyway.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause, 'cause we've, we, we have shingle and we've had to, we've been there for, gosh, thirty-five years now. And, uh, I think we've had to actually have it redone, we've just restained like baby toys.
Okay.
So.
But-
On the second floor, are you adding spurs because this is a deck you walk out on, is that what?
It's balcony, yes. So, yeah.
Um, I just went back through the notes, uh, from that night and it just said removing the columns and the windows, uh, were, would make, uh, it just said removing the columns, windows are negative. Uh, the motion was for unfavorable action due to the materials being out of character, which those have been fixed. And then criteria nine four two four A with the neighborhood, saying that out of character with the neighborhood. Um, and then it also impacts a, uh, negatively on a historic resource.
Yeah.
Because it is one of the underrises or-
That's the biggest, that's the biggest.
Oh, I should, yeah.
And I think what you meant by that was, uh, yeah, the shape of, the design of the porch and the window, basically.
Well, I think the biggest thing that we had said that had been, uh, that was the double shed dormer creates a de facto a third floor, which have now-
Changed.
Right, so if we-
The one side is less, the other side that faces the neighbor is-
Right, so this one's more of like a seventy percent, seventy percent dormer of the side, something like that. And the other one is, uh, more, a little more traditional, more conservative.
Although I, I find that the, the ratio of the window to the dormer is a little narrow.
Yeah, the window's small.
I mean, I know that double windows, I mean, if you wanna maintain the size of the dormer, you might wanna put in a double window.
Yeah, however, I just wanted to be, the board committee recommend us to use this kind of window because it's just make it uniform like the others.
Oh, I agree, I just, at that time, we were also look at, we didn't know what the final width of the dormer would be.
No, 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 essentially, this is how, how they see, they saw it and they told me, just try to make it uniform and make it similar like the other windows and we changed it from double to be single.
Mm-hmm.
This is the recommendation in the meeting which I had with them.
From ZBA.
Yeah, August twenty.
Right, from ZBA, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I understand, I'm just saying from the design guideline- Yeah, I'm just saying, I understand, I'm just saying from the design guideline, the window looks narrow inside the dormer, and I don't-
But normally the dormer is closer into the window. You have a window and it's a little bit-
Yeah, I'm just saying this, this space is really wide, so-
I, I understand what you said, because we had a different windows.
Yeah.
After the, our meeting in August twenty, we changed it to this way because the board felt it somehow is not the correct way, so we tried to make them please.
I understand, I'm, 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 you know, so there's obviously-
A lot of different comments is giving to us, and we tried to please everyone.
There's different comments, I mean, I understand, you can't, you can't.
Yeah, you can't, you can't.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, you know, I, I, personally, I think that a double window up there would not look horrible, I have one, I have a dormer on my roof, and we put in a double window.
I agree with you, but again, I'm trying, we try, we to have the double-
And they don't usually have that, historically, they don't have double windows.
Yes.
Right, but the, historically, the dormers also aren't that wide.
Are very narrow, uh, much wider.
Very much narrower, and someone dealing with a wider dormer, then it just looks strange. Um, I did have a concern on the back of the house, you essentially have a single window, is that the, is that the way it looks like now?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, that's true.
Wow. Okay, I was just surprised that there weren't more windows. And I know that, that one of the comments we had about the window on the, on the front of the house.
Hmm.
Above the porch.
Hmm.
Is currently, it looks like it's a, a single window with um shutters.
The, which one you talking about?
These.
No, no, no.
No, no, sorry, this, this one, right?
This one right here.
Uh, honestly, I, I don't know, but if you want to recommend a type of window that we can use, this would be the easiest fix, yeah, this is, yeah, this is the current one, you want to keep it this way?
Where, is your current design widening it? As, I'm just trying to understand your design.
Yes, yes.
We're just trying to, we're just trying to understand it.
Yes, the, the newer one is, yeah, like that.
Yeah, I mean, I would, personally, I'd prefer that if it's, that it be a single wingo, window, or I know a double is a little much to ask, but again, the front of some of these houses does have a double, my house has a double window on the front, you know, separated.
Hmm.
I don't wanna hold up my house as the, the ideal, but-
Yeah.
It does, on, on houses of this age, and they do have double windows, you could pull up my house.
I think to the, the point about the historic integrity had to do with keeping the windows that were there, and it seems like we could do that still on the first floor. The second floor, if you wanna have sliders and you can't, but-
Yeah, then, yeah. So I can keep the same window on the first floor, I'm fine, if that, the, you know, it's easy fix and it's not, for me, it's not a big deal, I can, I just want this project to happen.
Okay.
Okay. I understand.
So that's why, if that's something that you recommend today, I will make my architecture to finish it by tomorrow, and it will be easy for me. And I will not like have any bad thing about it.
Sliders also aren't historic, especially for the front of a house, I don't know if you guys thought about having one window and then like a French door, that might look a little more accurate.
Uh, one window and one?
Uh, doors that open out.
Like one French, like one door that-
But this will look ugly honestly, if it's a, like a balcony and you just get out of the balcony, I think just to have a slider is something more convenient.
It's certainly more convenient.
Sometimes you can get them to look more like they are doors.
Yeah, I mean, there are sliders which can be made to look like French doors.
Hmm.
Um. I guess the concern we have is that it would look like two large plate glass windows.
It just looks very modern, it just, it just strikes, what was it, eighteen hundreds for the house?
It's, it's probably-
I mean, you would never have a slider, would you?
But they didn't have them back then.
It's in nineteen, yeah, it's in nineteen.
Yeah. Um, I don't know a, a good solution to that.
But it's awful.
Sorry?
We certainly see single doors onto the balcony.
That's what I meant, like a single pane door.
But, but you're looking for more light as well, presumably.
I, yeah, and definitely, and other actually be more convenient, and think about, like, I have kids, and I think it would be convenient for a lot of us. And it will not make uh like a major change.
It's, it's still be nice and secure, so you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, so.
Uh, so.
It will not change the design, yeah, that like, it will not make a major change in my point of view, like, for the first floor, I think it's fine to have just one single window, but for the second, honestly, I feel slider is more convenient, looks more normal, it's not very odd, because it's surrounding us in many other houses.
I am swayed by your um argument about convenience, I'm also, I, I, I think it would detract from the look of the house. I also think that it can be replaced in the future, so that part doesn't just, things that are permanent changes to the home disturb.
Yeah, right, and that's the-
Things that can be, doors and windows can be moved and replaced. So I guess I don't have a strong opinion on this one, I don't know how the board feels. The board looks like it's deep in class.
I, I don't feel like I can support the windows and the doors, and since Maureen and Heather are not here, I feel like I have to stand strong because they also do not support
Well, I think we're-
The sliding glass door and the four panel window on the first floor.
I think we're, I think we're all agreed, and I think you've already admitted, that maintaining the existing window on the first floor is going to happen.
On the first floor. Yes.
So we're okay on the window.
In, yeah, in the first floor.
On the first floor, and so the real question is what happens to the, to the second floor doors? And so they wanna put a door, and it's obviously not, there are no balconies like that in the neighborhood, so the whole thing is a new thing.
The, actually, we, we got inspired uh by the balcony from someone in Canal Street, so you may know him, you know the White House has have, uh, just like the shade is kind of same, similar idea, since you live in Canal Street.
Is it where, on Canal Street?
Um.
Can we just go to Canal Street?
I can't actually open my laptop because I have the pictures.
We actually have a second floor balcony and it has French doors on it, like that one.
Can you, can we, can we examine your-
I can show you, they have the sheet, the sheet, but they don't have balcony, so we got inspired by them.
Oh, they, they don't have a balcony, but they have a shirt.
Um. And I can also send you the number because, I think forty-four, if you go this side, yeah, if you, just could you move, yeah, forward? Yes, move forward, just in front of the truck, and this house, yes.
Oh, these guys, yeah, that's a gorgeous house, yeah, totally right.
So can I ask you just, yeah, this one, yes, oh, this was, we actually got inspired by that.
Oh, yeah, the same return there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is a-
Did I see their windows, their windows lineup, first floor to second floor, they're the, like a historic ratio, like the size, and-
That looks very nice.
Yeah, so, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
You look like it's historic with the windows.
Yeah, I should note that this porch was not original to the house.
Yes, this was, this looked very not original, you know, I, but we got inspired by their idea.
Mm-hmm.
And we think about, okay, what about just instead of having just this, the shape to be like this, what about making it like a balcony as well?
So can we s, can we go and visit your home to look at what it-
That's fine, I don't know if you can see the doors, but.
Um, what is the-
We always like to see ex- examples.
That's fine, it's being straight, it's five.
Nope, the one, that's to the right.
It's to the right.
Oh.
Can you go upstairs?
Halloween, a little Halloween action here.
There's French doors up on the top.
Here, I'm gonna get, there you go.
Okay, so where, man?
Can't, yeah.
You can't really see it, and downstairs is a good example, you can't really see either, but there's one single window and then a French door, like a single French door.
Wow.
Can't really tell.
So this is the door?
That's a double door, and then if you go down, there's a single window, and then to the right is a fr- another French door, right there where your hand is, yeah.
Oh, the, yeah, this is the door right here, yeah.
I think that's more.
So this is actually a double width French door?
Kind of, yeah.
So that would be, so I don't know if, um, so you're concerned with the French doors, you prefer the slider because the door is out of the way?
Hmm, and more convenient, uh, yeah.
Okay. Is it, is it possible to get a slider with lights?
What do you mean slider with lights?
Pans, with separate panes so that it looks-
Molyens, so it goes-
Simulated divided light?
Simulated divider, like for instance, these French doors are com, the, it's composed of a grid of smaller panes, so it's not just a single-
Here, like the, so, so here, you, you see these, you see these here, I mean, it's like a traditional, yeah.
Glass.
Seeing a pane of glass.
I like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I thought, I thought I did, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's kind of breaking up-
Uh, I think, yeah, I think it would be even more beautiful, I find, it's, I, yeah, I think it will add some more ease, yeah, but yeah.
It is, and it's not much of a cost. It's not much.
It adds more character.
Yeah.
You could break up that single pane of glass into something that looks more-
That's fine, I think it will look gorgeous, because I understand the idea because we were thinking about doing a wall inside the, it's not something similar.
Hmm.
Uh, so I think this would be a great idea, we should make it slider and at the same time, make it like, look like French door.
It's called molyen, what is it, molyen, right?
Molyen, yeah, I know it.
Molyen, yeah.
Yes.
Um, right, I have, I have three comments that I've been kee- keeping track of so far, basically in terms of a potential whatever.
Recommendation.
Uh, we have maintain existing window on the first floor front facade, break up the single pane of glass on the second floor to use simulated divided light with, with molyens. Um, that's the only potential uh conditions that have been talked about.
Yeah, and I just, again, I, I have a can we pop out the, see if you can get a side view of my house on Canal Street, because that's the only thing I can think of, is, is the, is the dormer in terms of the width of the dormer versus the-
In your, what, Canal?
Twenty-six. And presume-
Whoops, what the heck?
I'm not bacon.
You're not bacon?
No bacon.
Bacon bacon?
I don't know. Which number?
Twenty-six.
Why is it doing this? For some reason it doesn't like, is the number locked now?
Well, it's having many problems.
Oh, my gosh.
There it is, okay, there's my house, there's the mess, okay, so.
Oh, I love that porch.
It's a, yeah, but it's not very deep, unfortunately, so, I mean, one of the, one of the design, I mean, we, obviously, we don't have the balcony.
That is a really nice porch.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah.
Right.
But if you can go around to the other side. That house doesn't exist anymore.
You can't really see from here, you can't really see from there.
Oh, for Pete's sake. Well, we have a dormer that pops up here, and it's, it's wide because it has to go over a stairwell.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
And it was so narrow that we put in two side windows, or I mean, it was wide enough. And this house came with a single window on top, and so we-
And you changed it?
We changed it to do because we have no architectural style, and it gave us a lot more light, so I understand, but when you look, it's just, um, yeah, so it looks odd, but-
I under- I understand your, again, your point of view.
Hmm.
About the windows for the dormers, but-
Whatever, if, whatever makes your life easier, I understand.
Uh, I want, again, my life to, to be easier, and I want the project to happen, and I, and my point of view, what happened from my two meetings, two previous meeting with the other committee, they are not easy to make things happen, honestly, I just am very frank with you because I was so frustrated the last two meetings.
Okay, was that the-
And I felt that they, they are not sure if they want to say yes or no, and they asked me to go back again to the planning design, and they asked me tons of questions because they are very unsure about, okay, is it the perfect decision to say yes or no?
So-
So I just want to let the things go, since they said, okay, we want the, the windows to be like this, I would say, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
And I want it to happen.
We did, we, I did forget to introduce this, that uh, right when we had a joint meeting with the ZBA, we came out of, uh, there was a policy that came out that, from the ZBA, that if, they felt there was um a project that needed a significant review, or sorry, a significant change, that whatever those changes were, should we go back to the planning board? That was like the night before, uh, that they were in fr, that, 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 uh, you and your team were in front, were in front of the ZBA, and they were just like, okay, first chance.
Yeah.
So that's why, that's why she's back here in the first place, is because these were changes that were deemed significant by the ZBA, and that, and that's why we're, we're back here in the first place. So sorry, I didn't say that from the beginning in terms of why sixty-two water is here.
Okay, so that's why I will keep it what they want, I will just do the adjustment that she wants me to do as well, because again, I am open to do those, I want this happen. I don't want to argue a lot for things which are not measured, honestly.
No. No, okay, we understand, we understand.
Okay.
So, so these are the, so these are the two conditions that have been talked about, if there's, are there any other potential things that we wanna talk about before, I don't know, I'm just looking at the time and we have a few more things and-
Yeah, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure, Heather, you, if you are, are you comfortable with the, in your roles advocating for a marine's position in terms of breaking out the second floor window using, you know?
Simulated divided.
Simulated dividers.
With molyens.
It's probably those, we're gonna get.
I, 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 thank you for that, Heather.
Yeah.
And I, I think that, I think that's a solution, I think that will be um both practical.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And I, and, and I think you'll like the look.
Cause you're gonna get it insulated doorway, and I'm sure they put molyens.
And it'll, and it'll, and it'll be in key to the building.
Yes, I admit, I love the practical solutions.
It's on mountain.
Mountain is what, sun under the roof, I believe, isn't it around a win, oh, no, it's around a window.
We like to have practical and still have it.
No. I don't know what that has to do with it.
It's always a challenge.
I don't know any things for this whole house.
Um, let's-
Okay, so do we have a motion with the, um-
So, maintain existing windows on the first floor front facade, break up the single pane of glass on the second floor to use simulated divided light with molyens, those are, and then those are the only potential conditions.
Do we care about the two small dormers being gabled or sheds?
We did, I, I think we-
I think it would look better for gables.
I think so, the two little ones.
The two little ones would look much better as gables.
Yeah.
Yes, that means it.
Yeah, I really wish you could see mine.
Ah, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cause that's a gorgeous little gable.
Okay, that's fine.
I think that will really enhance the value.
That would really look-
You see, that's fine, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying, because-
Yeah, so it's just-
Wander down my house and you can see it.
Okay, I, it's very good, fine, I, I understand that, so I can, yeah, we can do that.
Side with-
Yeah.
The side with two dormers sh- should be gabled, so, okay, so the side with two dormers should be gabled.
It adds more character to your home, I think.
I think that would-
That's it, I think, I think everyone would agree, that looks great.
How about the, the, the dormers should be gabled, not the side should be?
The side should be, oh, well, I'm saying which dormers.
The small dormers, the small dormers.
Yes, the two small dormers should be gabled.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because they are flat, they're straight.
Got it, the side with two small dormers should be gabled, okay, so those are the, those are the three, if there was a motion, you could just say, so move.
Okay, was there a motion?
Okay.
I don't believe there was a motion.
Did you get those three things?
I don't, so, we could get, so we need a-
Yep.
A motion to recommend um favorable action um to the ZBA on the petition uh with the following uh-
Conditions, and I'm, I'll say, I'll say them for you, so, so it's main-
Conditions. And you've got them right in front of you.
Yeah, maintain existing window on the first floor front facade. The second condition, we break up single pane of glass on second floor. And use simulated divided light with molyens. And the third, you're good, Liz? The third is um the side with two small dormers should be gabled, or the gable, yeah, the, the dormers on
How about just the two small?
The two, the two small dormers should be gabled, that's what I had you give. The two small dormers should be gabled.
Yes, okay.
And please could you add that I agree about those, so the committee, the board committee, when I meet them, they know that I agree about doing those, and I don't have any-
We can write a note of that, and when we transmit it.
Well, well, yeah, okay, is there a second?
I'll see.
I think I made the motion.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three oh, so, and I'm, I'm putting here a note when we said it says applicant has agreed to all these conditions.
Okay.
Okay, well, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much for this, nice meeting, happy home.
I actually, the picture of my, yeah, twins.
Oh, oh, I would love to see her, I would love to see her.
Yeah, we are neighbors anyway.
I would love to see pictures of your twins, they would be great.
How, DM, how, how comfortable?
I mean, you, you should see me, the grocery store, I have no grandchildren yet, and I've, I've got baby, I've got baby.
I really don't. You just wanna introduce it, but I don't think we should have any real motion meeting.
I mean, oh, you're.
I just wanna mention it.
You should mention yours.
Oh, we have to do the A and R.
We do, okay, why don't you, I would say you start doing this, I will go get the A and R, and then we can.
We're doing the A and R.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they crying?
Oh, that's wonderful. That's what they do, you know.
Okay, um.
This is a nice big one.
Oh, that's adorable.
Yeah, he had to go off, okay, and then, while we're looking at pictures, if you folks.
Do you want to see that?
Sure, I will see that.
Make it as well.
Oh, they are cute.
We like you kids.
Thank you.
So, let's, um, so thank you very much, and we're gonna, we are, we have um, gone beyond our allotted time, and we don't have two of our board members here, so
That's why we do a lot of them.
Thank you.
Speaking about the fall town meeting articles is um, gonna be difficult, especially since you have in front of you a brand new one that I penned in.
Thank you so much, I'm a big fan too.
You're very, I'm into, in reaction to something which came about, uh, a proposal was made a few months ago to um, demolish a structure and build a large five thousand square foot home, it came before us because of the size, it went through, I don't, right now, I don't recall all of the um, the reasons it came before us. Um, all of the boards which reviewed it disapproved it, it was disapproved by the ZBA. There's now a byright proposal which would turn the existing home into a two-car garage and build a four thousand square foot home as an addition. And this is allowed currently under our zoning bylaw for um, properties which are non-conforming, we allow additions to be built without review because if you're on a non-conforming lot, if you don't get review for everything, it would be a problem.
Already, yeah.
But I don't believe that that particular bylaw was, I think it was designed to give relief for reasonable additions to existing homes, I don't think it was designed to allow you to add extremely large structures on the side of existing homes, so I looked at our two places in the current bylaws where we could possibly make an adjustment.
Yeah.
Um, the first is um, in the actual section three-five-five, which is for additions to um, non-conforming structures.
Mm-hmm.
And um, as I pointed out in the memo, um, it's, the advantage from a regulatory standpoint is it's a special permit, it can be denied. However, it means that we would only ever see these if it came about through a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, site plan review would allow us to see um more, um, would have, be able to review more such projects, but the disadvantage is it's, you can't deny a site plan review, but you can put reasonable conditions. So, the approach I took was to simply put in it, and I think I'll turn the retires on, I'll just focus on them.
Wait, are we on fall town meeting articles?
Yeah, we're on fall town meeting.
So, this is a new article that has never been before the board yet.
This is.
Right, so we will, we will have, we'll have to have more discussion.
Never been before the board, and I recognize that.
Before it goes on the warrant.
Um, but I just wanted to, this is something that came up, and I think that it's, it's a dangerous precedent in terms of finding loopholes in our zoning bylaws, and I think it's, we're, we're always playing like a mole, and I'd like, and my apologies to the moles. Um, but I think we should get ahead of this, and so, my attempt at getting ahead of this was to include language in the um, site plan review section, which sent, which essentially says that if the total new footage of the structure is greater than a hundred and fifty percent of the existing square footage, that it would fall under site review.
Only through an addition? This was the only question that I had about your, I had about it, was that, is it have to do with an addition, or what about a completely compliant soup to nuts, a completely compliant project where the house gets demolished, and then a new house gets put in that's larger than two hundred percent? So, I didn't know if you just wanted to talk, obviously, this, the i- the idea is to talk about current scale, future scale, how does it correspond to the neighborhood? The, the goal here is to get it into site plan review for a very, very large addition, how is that different than tear down new construction? So, I think it's in the same boat, I don't, I don't know how, how to reconcile that yet, that was just, that was my only comment about this idea is that, what is like, it's kind of the same thing.
Yeah, because it would be easier for a developer to just not do a total demo, to get around this kind of thing, right?
It depends on, it depends actually on a ton of things, i- i- it's possible this, this could be easier, it's possible it could be harder, every situation is different there, but.
Right, so if you, I mean, it doesn't remove the existing minimum area required for a site plan review, so, we already have thirty-six hundred square feet, MRG, whatever, so it doesn't change that.
What I'm talking about is when we, when we um
Yeah.
two and a half years ago started doing so a little bit more demo uh, delay research.
Right.
We based, we found, and I haven't been able to update this, this is on the list, but it's just not, we're, I'm not getting to it, is the updating all of the new construction as a result of demolition. So, this is, they don't necessarily need a special permit or anything, meaning, and they could not go, they could not hit those site plan review, however, the house is going from fourteen hundred square feet.
Five thousand.
Torn down, going to forty-two hundreds, or if more likely.
Let's say thirty-five, thirty-six hundred.
Yeah, so, uh, so maybe they're going to thirty-five, maybe they're going to thirty-five hundred from tw- from fourteen hundred. That will happen, or that has happened pretty regularly.
Oh, wow, absolutely.
Doubling of the square footage, doubling of the price, but not hitting a site plan review trigger. So, is the intention here, this is my question, is the intention here to cover the new construction, and would it be the same percentage of a hundred and fifty percent, cause that's, I mean, that's basically gonna be every new house, then would be under that, and it, I'm just throwing, sorry, my mind started going.
Right.
No, but I have, but I have to, I have to tell you, and this is the second year where I've had so many of these discussions at our neighborhood block party, you know? And you, I'll tell you what, just when I talk with people in my neighborhood, when I encounter people down at Starbucks, if I was going to suggest that to somebody, they'd be thrilled.
So.
Just people in the neighborhoods.
Right. So, currently, the language I put in here only require, only comes into expansion, not.
New construction.
New construction.
Hmm.
I am, I'm actually, um, I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of extending this to new construction.
Because what, 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 was, what I find people getting most upset about, honestly, is things that you're just, they're, they're.
Three times bigger, three times bigger.
Pour it down, pour it down, new construction, and it's this monstrous thing.
So, it's a, it's essentially another way of putting a minimum size to bring us.
Uneffectual expansion, meaning whether it's, whether it's a new house or not, it's still, it still will be considered an expansion, and that's how we would do it.
Right. And I think um, one of the benefits perhaps of going this route is that it is based on the existing size of the house.
Mm-hmm.
So, it says, you can, you know, you can take your two thousand square foot house and make it three thousand square foot, but you can't make it thirty-five hundred.
Without review.
Without review.
Mm-hmm.
And um so.
It might, it might slap a lot of site plan reviews at ZBA, is, that's.
But one of the things that, and I may be wrong about this, and, and my brain is in a state where I'm probably wrong on everything.
We're, yeah, we're nearly there.
I think it's a little late to be talking about.
Yeah, it's, no, but it was, I did introduce it, get it on camera, so people can see that it's a possibility.
Yeah, but. Yeah.
No, that's okay, we have more discussion, I don't think this is gonna be a settled thing tonight.
No, no, one of the things is that we are, we were using site plan review as essentially a, a soft goad to get people to build smaller. And so, increasing the number of home, of projects under site plan review may get them to think again and say, we shouldn't build that large. Is your concern that they'll say, this limit is too small, so we're gonna build that size anyway, and then we'll be flooded with site plan reviews?
My, my feeling is that, is that when you look at sim- you, when you look at the new construction as the result of demolition over the past three years, nearly all of them are doubling, are doubling the square footage.
Yeah. Anyway.
So, out of the roughly twenty-five demolitions that we get a year, or tw- sorry, twenty-five new constructions as the result of demolitions that we get each year, you might see every one of those before ZBA on top of, you know, for site plan review.
Right.
That, so that, the, and the reason why is simply, I think finances, just.
But see, I would be fine having more review, I just think we would want to be knowing what we're looking for a little more, like, that makes me think about new construction design guidelines, you know, like, what are our actual rules, what do we want them to be doing differently?
Yeah. I mean.
Instead of just getting them in here, you know, like, what is the list of things you want done?
Sure.
And say, too big, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, you said dormers, or their materials, you said garages, you said, no.
Yeah.
It's a very good po- I mean.
I'd rather do that.
What, so what we're dealing with that right now is there, that, what's, how that's managed is through um, the out of character
Right.
in the site plan review, so, so everything is basically, in terms of the design guidelines, is basically, you're looking at the neighborhood and you're saying that this doesn't fit in, so that, that's how it's, that's how.
Right. This is just reminding me of something I'm already done to do, like when that woman was saying, well, have you done a study, you know, it's like, well, if you have design guidelines, you're like, yes, these are the things we're looking for, and this is why it doesn't work.
Well, I agree with you that we need those, um, my question is, which is more important to come first?
Well, yeah, because, yeah, exactly, because I think that, like, I think the design guidelines, I think, are extremely important, and I, because I think that you know, cause it's, cause it's, cause it's both, both the design.
You think. I think we can model it.
Is impacted, as well as the overall size, I mean, it's the two things.
Yeah.
And it's just the question of, of how do we, how do we get, get to that?
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern with going the route of the design guidelines first is that I foresee that taking many months.
Sometimes.
Yeah, I'm not saying it needs to come first, it just, to me, it feels like a similar thing, like, we're asking more people to come in, okay, why?
Yeah. I. Right, and we, we, yes, um.
That's absolutely.
I mean, the, the fact that, that homes are being built really large, to my mind, is more a question, it's more a result of, of what the profit margins are on larger homes, they're just larger, they're bigger.
That's right.
And so, the fact that a home is built to four thousand plus square feet is because the builder knows that if they build, yeah, that they can build to four thousand square feet, they get X percent more profit, it's not linear.
Convention.
Exactly.
So, but, that's not my concern, and my concern is whether this home is appropriate to the neighborhood, and if they have to come in and go through a site plan review in order to make it so, then I'm more than fine with that.
Yep, they are.
We, I.
Yeah.
I think we should just, um, it's, it's very typical to fi- to determine a, a, a rough number of how many, you know, how many more special permits are we gonna get as the result of this new bylaw, like, that, that should, and you're never gonna get that right, but there should be the, there should be the exercise.
Yes, I agree, so.
I agree, I agree.
But, I think we should just move forward at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I was, we're seeing two of our board members, and I don't know.
See what we can do, we're not done.
Can you put it on the agenda for next time?
I think it's on our fall town meeting article, like, from here on out, fall town meeting articles will always have a place on the agenda, period, so.
We, we, yes, I mean, we are running out of time to discuss them, because we obviously, we need to get them finalized by the end of this month, and there are on.
Right, so, so it's technically the, the closing of the warrant is the twenty-fourth, but we have our meeting on the twenty-fifth, and we're allowed, we're allowed to, you know, have that time, um,
Yeah.
to that extra day, so, but, I mean, we're looking at two weeks.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
So, I, I, I understand this is very late in the process, and I have, I hold forth no hopes, no, that's not true. I have hopes that we can resolve this and put this on the town for fall town meeting, but I am not gonna, you know, if, obviously, if people wanna discuss this longer than, yeah, this is a big deal, and I think Brian is gonna.
I just wanna read it and then.
Yeah.
You've tried all weekend to read it.
Very good, um.
I did, I did read it, I did read it, but, but.
Wait, I thought I just got this.
No, it wasn't your packet.
No, no, I, no, I did, I did read it, and it's been, it's one, it's one of those things that.
Should've gotten in your packet.
Oh, I thought you just moved.
But I find, but I find with, with any of these things.
No, you got this.
No, I can do something else.
But I.
This is what we're gonna do, yeah.
But I find, as with any of these, um, you know, to get the flavor of the board and other board members, I think it just really adds and enhances the overall process, as we know, so.
That's, yes.
I'm not telling you anything else.
I thought you just gave him his app, but I just wanted to read it.
No, 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 that's not, I was, I was just joking. Yes, no, yes, no?
Yes, no.
Yes, no? Maybe, okay, so, do we have an A and R that we have, that Brian pulled up, and I think that, do you, do you need to discuss the A and R?
Well, I would like to discuss that I'm really disappointed to see this.
So, um, I was gonna ask Brian why there was a fence up, and then I saw this, and I was like, ugh.
I, this is. This is where there's been a lot of, a bunch of, chunk of the house.
Yeah, yeah, so this is a, um, this is a, uh.
This is a kind of a repeat that what has already happened on Grove Street.
Yeah.
Um, almost to a T, except that they don't need a variance.
Ah.
So, even if the previous one lopped it off, I'm sorry, the, um, on Seven Grove, they ended up not um, removing a portion, but they, and, and because of that, they granted the, they were granted a variance for the new lot, this, they are just removing this, they don't need any permission to remove this, and they will get a conforming lot out of it. There's nothing at this moment that we can do about.
Does it matter that it's a historic house? I mean, this is a huge chunk, right, that's not a porch like on Grove, so I don't want.
It's definite, so I believe it's, I believe it's uh, seven of the sixteen rooms, so it's nearly half a lot, it's, no, it is, it, it doesn't, it doesn't look like a lot on the plan.
Yeah. It does when you're out there.
When you're out there, it does, um, so.
So, why don't they have to, why is there no, like, historic commission, like, why?
It was, there was actually an article in the Star a couple of weeks ago, or last week's, the, the previous owners opted out of the demo delay.
So.
Dem- demoed away.
Yes, so.
Oh, this is a one of the article, huh?
Yep.
So, but even, even if they didn't, even if they didn't uh, opt out, uh, it would still be a, a, a
So, yeah.
debatable with a historical commission whether this would be considered substantial demolition, I would imagine they would, they would consider it substantial demolition. But nothing was triggered because as DM said, the previous owner, not the current owner, the previous owner opted out of the demo delay and bylaws, so, they're free and clear. Uh, the only thing that we're talking about now is whether or not all the submission requirements on this plan specifically have been met, they have.
Have been met.
Um, the only other possibility is that if, um, so, this was submitted at a time that is uh, prior to twenty-one days before now. Meaning that this, and we knew this going in, it didn't matter, that this was already been essentially constructively approved because of the twenty-one days have passed. Even, so what, what does that mean? That means that even the fact that if you, they, you choose not to sign it because you have some objections, objections against the, the project, it still will get approved under all circumstances.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
It's just, this is a corner lot, it's totally wooded, and it's gonna change the whole base of that
Character.
Yes.
corner in that street, I mean, you see it coming both ways, it's all trees right now.
No, this is all, this is all a gar- so, this, this is all a, a remnant of, of a very large garden that, in this area.
Yeah.
Um, no, there, there's certainly some, some sad story, some sad stories about it, it, I just, I don't have a need to say.
There will be. I mean, we are, you know, we're bound by.
We're bound by the law.
By the law, which says that this can go forward, and we can choose not to sign it, but as Brian said.
It really, either way, even if the twenty-one days did not get appro- so, the other situ- like, if this was not twenty-one days in, and we decided not to sign it,
But it's, but it's, but it's practical.
Once the twenty-one days hit, it would still get approved, that's why approval not required meets.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it is really sad, and I certainly will sign it, but I will sign it with great sadness, because.
I think it's formal. What's the point of signing it?
Well, I, I'll tell you what, just, 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 just as a minor protest, I won't.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I, it does nothing, and I don't support it.
I mean, if you want it, if you, I can understand that, to be, to be extremely frank, uh, the only thing this does is create a little bit more work for the town clerk.
Why?
Cause it has to get constructively approved, that the, the clerk's office has to say that twenty-one days have passed, um, they have to put a, the stamp on it and write a form. I mean, it's not like I'm, you're giving them a ton of work, but I'm saying the only real.
We have, we have signed A and Rs which we have disapproved of before.
We've also not signed them, we've done, we've, you've done both.
We've also not signed them.
I have not.
You have not been part of that.
I have not been part of it.
I have.
So, that, that has happened, I've been here four years, I think it's happened twice.
Yes.
And, um.
And it's that, it happened before that too, before you were.
I mean, it's, it's a question of, do we, how do we review, how do we view our responsibilities as a board in terms of upholding the, following the letter of the law in terms of our duties, and this would be one of them, where we would follow the letter of the law, because the law says that.
The submission requirements have been.
The submission requirements, every other thing that we, we discussed, we have, there's a lot more grayness, because we have guidelines, there are, um, you know, maybe your character, all of these other things which has a lot more debatable stuff, but this is the letter of the law.
Yes.
So, I can understand why.
It is there, but done.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just pointing it out, I don't mean to sway you one way or the other.
Oh, no, oh, no, good, cause, 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 cause where I'm, where I'm sitting is like, look, it's basically a done deal, whether we sign it or not. So, you know what? Fine, I'm taking the opt-out.
I will sign it, I don't know if that matters, we still need to have majority of the board sign it.
That's fine.
Correct, you would need three.
We have to have a motion to endorse it in the rule.
Okay, yeah, we need a motion to endorse it. Okay, so this is.
That, that's a li, that's a little different proposition.
Okay, so we need to, is there a motion to endorse or not, and I guess there's no motion to endorse.
You can, you, I would, if anything, I would have a motion acknowledging the fact that all submission requirements have been met, because that's true.
Yeah.
And whether.
What are the submission requirements?
There's like fourteen submission requirements for this plan, what needs to be on the plan?
On there, yeah, they, they just, yeah, there's a stamp on it.
You know, what's it supposed to look like?
And you checked that?
Yeah. Um, you, you guys are supposed to be checking too. But yes, I did check, uh, double check. Um, so yes, all the, all the requirements have been met. Uh, I think if there was gonna be a vote, I can understand a, a non-endorsement, but there should be acknowledgement because, or else, I mean, we should say that the submission requirements have not been met, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, we have to, so what is, please, someone come up with one, cause I can't.
Something along the lines of, uh, acknowledging that all submission requirements have been met according to the subdivision rules of the Town of Winchester.
Yes, okay, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Betsy acknowledging that all submission requirements for the A and R.
Yeah. Have, have been met.
Have been met.
How, however.
That's, I would stop there.
Just stop right there.
Cause it's not an endorsement, it's just saying.
It just says it's been met, okay, fine.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, so we have acknowledged that all, so it's three, zero.
And you can choose to sign or not, it won't matter?
It won't matter.
Because one is not three.
One is not three, and then there's no point in putting my signature back, so. And right now, I, I, I apologize, I should have brought this up before.
Oh, that's okay.
No, there's one last thing, there's a meeting tomorrow to discuss development at, behind the Bagel Land, about the little chunk of town land that the owners of the Bagel Land property, which is next to the used car lot that we talked about earlier today.
Yes.
They, there's a meeting tomorrow morning at, I have no idea what time it is, it's after ten? I'm unable to make it, I'm a little, I'm a little upset.
I can, I can prob, I can, I can probably make it, but just, I just need to know what time, just need to know what time it is.
I'm a little upset, but I found out about this this afternoon, that David Arico of the Select Board is assembling a bunch of people, including attorneys for the landowner, to discuss this, and we're given tomorrow or Thursday. And I have no idea why it's.
Excuse me.
So, I am unable to make it Thursday or tomorrow.
And I, I, I can't make it in the, in the mid-morning tomorrow.
Well, they are already.
Well, I've got an email from David saying that everyone was able to make it except myself, and would the town planner or someone else from the board be there to represent the planning board? Um, and let me, let me read you his email.
The last one was, the last one was in the afternoon, but the town manager says I can meet mid-morning.
It says, it looks like everyone can meet except yourself, meaning me, Wednesday late morning. Is there someone else from the planning board that could attend? Maybe Brian could report findings to your board, please advise.
Were you already planning on calling Brian?
So I said I'm available the time, might the times, and they, um, there doesn't look like there's any consensus. I'm not seeing consensus amongst these.
I don't either, I mean, there's a bunch of dates, so the point was late morning, and you are available after ten tomorrow.
Yes, I put after, I said eleven to two tomorrow.
So, late morning is eleven, and there's no way I can make it, I don't even know if I'm gonna be able to get out of the house tomorrow.
Well, if it can't happen, it can't happen, I mean.
Well, I won't be there, but I'm more than, I believe that we can trust Brian to represent the board well at this meeting.
I, I can, I can, I can, I can get there.
All right, I, I still don't even know when it is, so.
At that meeting, can you pers, I mean, I, can you determine whether or not the purchase of that car, the used car, is part of this thing? Because that's what I was under the impression, and maybe I heard it wrong.
You may know he was saying he doesn't own it.
Yeah, Mr. Elviana said that they did own it, and they weren't in, um, it wasn't part of the proposed project, and maybe.
Do you just wanna know if that lot is part of the project?
I would like to know if they are intending on including that lot, because I thought they were. And, and so my, my comment was on the assumption that they were looking at developing the corner lot with the used cars, the Bagel Land, and the, using the two, the duplex on, um, I guess that's Clark Street.
Clark.
Yeah. So maybe, I, maybe if my recollection is totally bogus, which is, then it is.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it is.
But anyway, if some clarity on that would be good, so that the board has an understanding of the development going on there.
Okay, I can get that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So, no one is signing the A and R?
No one is signing the A and R.
Yeah, it will, it's actually already, the twenty-one days have been up, so it is already been constructively approved.
So kind of immaterial.
But I usually put the present members signing.
Yes.
Zero, zero members.
Yes, I have, I have an amazingly drawn headache, so yes, so I, I just wanna, that was, I apologize, it's the last thing. So, I think we, we don't have to do action items today.
We're.
We're good. So let us, let us adjourn.
Somebody?
Somebody, please.
Oh, move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for, thank you, Town of Winchester, thank you, we can, enjoy your evening.